I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is 6:00 PM. This evening, we will be led in the invocation by Trustee Nelson and our color guard from the Woodlands Junior Air Force ROTC, color guard under the direction of Chief Master Sergeant Roger Garcia, present the colors for our pledges.
Please join me in a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we approach your throne of grace this evening with gratitude in our hearts. We're grateful for the countless blessings you've lavished upon us individually and collectively. Thank you for the gift of life and love and laughter, for the gift of family and friendship and freedom. Thank you for all the educators in the district who have answered the high call in their lives to invest in our children and their future. We've had another amazing academic year and we want to thank you for your great faithfulness, Lord. We praise you for all the stories of success we've heard, for the many victories we've witnessed both in and outside of the classroom. And we celebrate the accomplishments of the thousands of students who are set to graduate just this weekend to begin. God bless our graduating seniors as they step into the next chapter of their lives. May they sense the riches of your mercy and grace upon them, enable them to continue to grow into the people you've created them to be, and let them come to understand and know that you have great plans for them, plans to prosper them and not to harm them, plans to give them hope and a future. God, we also come before you tonight with a heavy and hurting hearts over the loss of life within our community. We pray for all those who are walking through the valley of the shadow of death right now. God comfort them in the way only you can and remind them of the hope available to them through your Son. Remind us also, as your hands and feet, that you've empowered us to be agents and ambassadors of hope and healing and at the same time to rise to the challenge of combating the physical, emotional, and mental health challenges plaguing our community. Father, we also want to pause and give you thanks for Dr. Knoll. We're grateful for him and his willingness to answer your call on his life. CISD has been blessed beyond measure through his leadership. Thank you for his inspiring work ethic, dedication to excellence, and for his love for the children of this precious community. Watch over, protect, and guide Dr. Knoll and his family as he continues to pursue your will for his life. Bless him and keep him. Make your face shine upon him and be gracious to him, Lord. Turn your face toward him and give him peace. Give us peace as well. Lead and guide. Pour out your wisdom on us as we continue to search for a new superintendent, a leader who has a heart like yours, a leader who will take us to new and exciting levels, who will be great and mighty tide will rise all boats. We know you have great plans for this district, Lord. Your word tells us you are able to do immeasurably more than we could ask or imagine. God, we embrace this truth today and believe there are even greater days ahead for our school district. We are incredibly excited to step into the fullness of all you have in store for us. Finally, Father, continue to place your hand of protection over every campus and upon every educator, employee, and student at the district throughout the state and around this great nation. Help them to persevere with patience and finish the year strong and give them an amazing summer filled with an abundance of laughter, rest, and renewal. I pray all this in the precious and powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Okay, introducing our color guard Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Madeline Haas, Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Joshua Juno, the Texas flag. I meant Madeline is the American flag. And also Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Cash Miller, right guard, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Tristan Powers, left guard. Please join me in pledging allegiance to the greatest flag in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you very much. All right. Now we have lots of awards and recognition to do, which is one of the best parts, is recognizing our wonderful staff and students. All right, item 2A, Students Together Achieving Results Program. Dr. Tanya Merrick, our Crisis Intervention Specialist, will share about the program and introduce our recipient.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. With graduations beginning this Friday, we would like to recognize a group of seniors for their participation, leadership, and commitment to the Students Together Achieving Results, or STAR, program. STAR is a four-year program designed to support promising students who may face potential barriers to success. Selected by school counselors, these students are provided with ongoing guidance and opportunities aimed at helping them to explore post-secondary options and develop the skills needed to make informed decisions about college and career pathways. This year, our counselors created what we called a profile of a STAR student. This profile outlined the skills and character traits that we aspire for our STAR students to develop. For example, the counselors aspired for the STAR students to exhibit positive character traits, to be resilient, to have a growth mindset, and to be aware of post-secondary opportunities. Every meeting and activity planned were created with the enhancement of the positive character traits of a profile of a STAR student in mind. The STAR counselors worked diligently to invest in the lives of our students. Throughout the year, STAR groups participated in various field trips to colleges, universities, and places of business. During these field trips, the STAR counselors were intentional about helping our students to make connections to their options and opportunities post-high school graduation. This year was filled with memorable experiences. We explored the incredible academic opportunities at Lone Star College and the University of Houston. At Sam Houston State University, we had a blast exploring the campus and diving into the fun student traditions that make it unique, all while checking out their impressive housing options. We had the chance to witness the culinary magic and sampled the tasty treats at the Culinary Institute. We also spent a full day at ExxonMobil and toured their beautiful campus, interacted with their employees via panel discussion and lunch. We competed in a STEM activity and explored their awe-inspiring science lab. In summary, this year, we have 53 graduating seniors who participated in our STAR program. Receptions were held for them at their respective high school campuses. With that said, we do have an outstanding senior, Gabrielle Clark, with us this evening, and she has prepared to share what the STAR program has done for her. Gabby is the embodiment of leadership, commitment, and resilience, all of which are qualities that we strive to develop in our STAR students. Please help me to give a warm greeting to Gabby Clark. Thank you.
Hello and good evening, everybody. My name is Gabrielle Clark, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak about the STAR Group program and my experience in the STAR Group program at Grand Oaks High School. When I first started my junior year, I was lost, unsure, and unaware of what I was going to do with my future. So when I signed the papers and joined the program, you would think I'd be ecstatic to it. But on the contrary, I wasn't. I asked my parents, my friends, and other peers about what I should do, and my parents said something that struck me. They said this one quote that really resembles my whole STAR Group experience. They said, "If you overlook the opportunities that seem small to you, you may miss the big changes in your life." For someone who's always in a rush, many clubs and many sports, I've come to realize in my few years of experience that the opportunities I almost missed were the ones that had the best impact on my life. So when I joined the program, I went to the University of Houston first, a school I never thought I could see myself at and a school I'd never, ever applied to. But when I walked in and saw the beauty of the school, the beauty of the programs, and the beauty of the school altogether, I was in shock. But what struck me wasn't the buildings, wasn't the business programs, and it wasn't the scholarships, but when we walked into the cafeteria. And yes, I know what you may think, I was hungry, but it was far from that. When I walked in, I saw students working together, studying together, eating together, just being in community and having a beautiful culture. For the first time in a long time, I saw myself in a community that I could fit in. Grand Oaks has provided such a warm environment, but I was scared that I wouldn't find that anywhere else. When I walked into the college, I felt myself making friends, being successful, and having a future. I went home so happy, ready to start thinking about colleges, ready to start learning more about the college, and ready to start my future. This year, we went to Sam Houston State University, another school that I had overlooked once again, and boy, I was happily wrong. I walked in and it wasn't the same experience as University of Houston, but it was just as beautiful. I went in and saw the beauty of the school, and it was a warm, welcoming environment from not just the students, but also the custodians and staff. And just again, I went home excited to learn about my future, excited to learn about school, and excited to deep dive into what's my next path. Through the STAR Group program, I've learned that not only do I have opportunity, I have options. I have many options, which is something I didn't know I had. This STAR Group program has provided me with friends, opportunities, options, and most importantly, a future, something I didn't know I had. So I thank you guys for providing groups like this, the STAR Group for allowing me to be in this program, and I thank the school system for having hope in little of me. Thank you to the STAR program and thank you for this opportunity. I'm so glad I didn't take it up. Thank you so much.
One thing I want to point out is she delivered that from the heart and not reading it off her phone. I just want you to know that. Impressive.
On behalf of the board, I just want to say congratulations to you and to this amazing program and all the STAR seniors that are graduating this year, 53 of you all. Welcome to the next phase of your life. And I can say that I think that what you gained is a lot of grit and perseverance. And I've been on planet Earth a long time, and I've realized that those two qualities are what really makes the difference. And I can tell that you have them, and I bet your STAR seniors do as well. And thank you to the counselors so much for doing this and just investing in our students in such a deep way and making their learning experience real in the real world. So congratulations.
If our HR team is out there, could we get her a contract? Let's just sign her now. Let's just get it done now, early.
Okay, golly. Moving on to CTE Skills USA 2025 State Champions. Tally Stout, our amazing Director of Career and Technical Education, will introduce the teachers who will present their students to the Board of Trustees. We ask that the recipients please stay so we can get photos and shake hands, okay?
Oh, they're ready. Good evening, President Odenweller, Dr. Knoll, and board members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to recognize our outstanding career and technical service students. We have named state champions or grand champions in their respective organizations. Tonight, we celebrate excellence across three prestigious career and technical service organizations, Skills USA, FFA, and HOSA. These career and technical service organizations transform education from theoretical-practical to allowing students to apply classroom knowledge to real-world challenges. The competitions simulate authentic workplace scenarios, providing valuable experience that many students don't encounter till well into their professional careers. Tonight's champions represent the exceptional qualities of Conroe ISD career and technical education programs and the dedication of our CT teachers, who mentor these students through countless hours of preparation. They exemplify our district's commitment to preparing all students for future success, whether a pass leads directly to workforce, to technical certification, or to college degrees. So now, Skills USA recognition. We're going to start with Skills USA. It's a national career and technical student organization that develops specialized skills through hands-on learning that directs, translates to workplace. And from the Woodlands High School, we have the audio/video teacher, Mr. Scott Folk. Ms. Addison Hussey. Ms. Elou Valdevia. These young ladies earn gold medals in digital cinema production. Also, from the Woodlands High School, under the direction of Scott Folk, Natalie Mickelthwaite. Natalie received gold medals in TV video production. These teams spent endless hours storyboarding, shooting, and editing their production, often working through technical challenges that professional filmmakers face daily. Their determination has earned them not only gold medals, but also impressive $10,000 scholarships to Texas State Technical College. And they will be representing Conroe ISD at the National Skills USA Championship this summer in Atlanta, Georgia. And now, from Conroe High School, we have the engineering teacher, Eric Canister. We have Isra Lugo. Kaylee Pinya. Eddie Corrado. This team earned Skills USA State Championship recognition for their competition in applied engineering. These students applied physics, math, and technical skills to create your solutions to real-world engineering challenges. This is your Skills USA Champions.
On behalf of the school board, I just want to say a big congratulations to you guys. This is a huge honor, and we are so proud of you. I'm sure your parents are proud. Do we have parents? Want to stand up? This takes a village to raise our kids, right? So I cannot stress to you guys how important it is, what you're doing right now. You are sowing into your future. You are creating hard skills that will make you employable for the rest of your life. So you are leaps and bounds ahead of where I think most people are when they are your age. So congratulations, guys. Thank you to the teachers for all of your hard work. And Ms. Stout, thank you for creating such an amazing CTE program. We appreciate you.
And now for FFA recognition. The National FFA Organization develops students' potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agriculture education. What many people don't realize is the extraordinary commitment these students make to their projects. Some crafted incredible projects and others raise livestock, and some do both at the same time. I'm excited to get to recognize FFA members tonight that have been named grand champion for their involvement at Montgomery County Fair. And now, from the Woodlands High School, Ms. Rachel Kincaid. Ms. Rachel Kincaid is the FFA advisor. They are also under the direction of Bo Bearloo and Trey Woodson. She does. That's why I said the FFA advisor.
That was a compliment, for sure.
All right, our first. Elise Enman. Elise Enman earned grand champion chickens, receiving an impressive $10,000 from her sale. Also, Ms. Avery Bennett. Ms. Avery Bennett achieved grand champion in handicraft division, earning $3,400 from the auction. From Oak Ridge High School, advisor, Ms. Ashley Wilson. And student, Abigail Mason. Abigail earned grand champion in horticulture. This achievement represents craftable cultivation, extensive knowledge of plant science, and agriculture business principles. Abigail did an amazing job with an arrangement and received top dollar at the auction. And now, from Conroe High School's FFA program, under the direction of Ms. Casey Short, student Kylie Canister. Kylie achieved grand champion in rabbit showmanship. The showmanship competition requires not only excellent animal control, but also the ability to present their livestock professionally, demonstrating extensive knowledge of breeding, feeding programs, and industry standards. And last but not least, from Conroe High, we would like to recognize Avery McCartney.
Oh my gosh, she's so cute.
Avery earned the prestigious Fair Queen title. Being named the Montgomery County Fair Queen is a prestigious honor that represents excellence in leadership, public speaking, and the dedication to agriculture education. The Fair Queen serves as an official ambassador to the Montgomery County Fair and Rodeo, representing the Fair Association at numerous regional events and functions throughout her reign. Beyond the $3,500 scholarship award, crown, and recognition, the Fair Queen embodies the spirit of Montgomery County in her agriculture heritage and serves a role model for young women throughout the community. This is your FFA Champions.
I feel like I would rather face you. Clearly, FFA keeps you young is really what happens. Well, I just wanted to, on behalf of the board, just thank you all and congratulate you all and your hard work. I'm the mother of an FFA student, so I understand firsthand the hard work and dedication that goes into the work that you all are putting in. I mean, out the door at 5:00 AM to get there to the barn before school starts, and then after school, and the different shows that you're doing. It's really an incredible thing to see and to watch and the amount of dedication and focus that it takes to control your animal or control whatever it is that you're doing. But I'm really, really proud of the work that you're taking because this is not only something that you're going to take with you in high school, but it's going to take with you for the rest of your lives, and it's going to set you up for your career in the future. If your career may be in agricultural engineering, where's Tally? Yes, your career might be in agricultural engineering or education, so. Yeah, it's 100%. We would love to have you back, but we are so very proud of you and thank you so much for working so hard. We have a great CTE department. Thank you, Tally Jo Stout. We appreciate you and love you. On behalf of the Conroe ISD Board of Trustees, thank you and congratulations.
Sorry about that. We thought we were missing someone, and they're here, so we're excited. Okay, Ms. Stout, would you like to come again?
And our final state champion from the night comes from HOSA. This is a future health professionals in an international student organization that promotes career opportunities in health science and enhances the delivery of quality healthcare. These students pursue some of the most challenging coursework while simultaneously preparing for competition that mirrors real healthcare scenarios. Tonight, we recognize Oak Ridge High School's Health Science individual, Ms. Lucy Wu. Lucy earned state champion award for her medical art poster. The competition required Lucy to research a healthcare topic in depth and designs an informative and visual-appealing educational tool and defended her work before judges from the healthcare industry. Lucy demonstrated not only artistic talent, but also a sophisticated understanding of medical concepts and effective health communication. Congratulations, Lucy, your HOSA state champion.
Lucy, on behalf of the board, congratulations on your state championship. I would love to see the poster. I was hoping it was going to be here tonight, but congratulations to you.
Moving on to special recognition of our 2025 UIL Class 6A Boys Discus Throw State Champion, Tyler Grant for the Grand Oaks High School. Principal, oh, okay. I didn't know if it was going to be Principal Bush, or there we go. Come on.
Head football coach, athletic coordinator, Sean McDowell. We'll make our introductions here from Grand Oaks High School, two state champions.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. My name is Sean McDowell. I'm the head football coach, campus athletic coordinator at Grand Oaks High School, and I couldn't be prouder to be here with you tonight. I would like to introduce you first to Tyler Grant and to Asha Vargas, two of our outstanding state champions that we have at Grand Oaks. These young men are a testament to the type of student that we have at Grand Oaks. It is very clear, just based on here tonight, that Grand Oaks is the premier high school in a premier school district in the state of Texas. And make no mistake, we come to play every time. That's why we are state champions, and we've been up here many times. I also want to thank Mr. James Bush, our fearless leader, for his vision and his guidance and leadership to make all these things possible, and the same with you all. I'd also like to bring up his coach, Coach Brandon Poncho. Poncho to say a few words about Asher.
My name is Coach Krantz. This is my fourth year at Conroe ISD, and I've had the pleasure of meeting Tyler on my, literally my first year, in Conroe ISD, and coaching track. And this is my 18th year to coach track, and I'll be honest with you, it was an amazing journey to see where Tyler started from, and now, in a couple days, he's going to walk across the stage for even a bigger gift, which is his graduation. And just to give you a couple highlights about Tyler and some things that he's done, some things that hopefully will be unchangeable. A couple weeks before state, he competed at the regional competition, where Tyler threw 202 feet in the discus. And just to put that in perspective for you, that would be the furthest of anyone in the state of Texas at any level, all right, for this particular year. And ironically, he unseated a record at Midway Waco Stadium that is one year older than I am. So, yes. So, his name in Grand Oaks and Conroe will be attached to that now, hopefully for the next 50 years. But that, but that is Tyler Grant, an epitome of athletics, but the young man in general with a heart of gold. And ladies and gentlemen, that is the true testament of the state champion that he really is, because he's not only a state champion in discus, he is going to be a state champion in life.
If I, first off, if I could start off really fast, I would like to recognize four impactful individuals, family members that were not able to be here, but hopefully are in attendance online. Four individuals that I know support Asher Vargas, obviously through the ups and through anytime, anything that he goes through. His father, Mr. David Vargas, his mother, Ms. Sabra Vargas, older sister Gabby Vargas, and younger sister, Ms. Michaela Vargas, to, to help Asher pursue his passion and obviously his craft that he's extremely blessed with, and also in high academics. Thank you. Okay, now, if I may begin. President Odenweller, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Noel, thank you for the opportunity to recognize not only a remarkable young man, but a highly talented, superb competitor, championship-renowned golfer. First, though, it's important to compliment his superior work ethic, commitment to the team, and focus on being not only the best golfer in Texas high school, but nationally, internationally, and more. Asher Vargas has amassed some staggering accolades and stats through his junior year at Grand Oaks High School. Asher carries a high GPA 4.0, excelling in academics and community involvement. This spring, at the STPGA Gala, he was named South Texas PGA Junior Golfer of the Year. American Junior Golf Association Rolex AJGA rankings, Asher ranks number three in all classes. Junior Golf Scoreboard, Asher ranks 20th for all classes. Winner of the 2023 AJGA Austin, Minnesota Junior Championship. Winner of the 2024 AJGA Wyndham Invitational. Runner-up for the 2024 Junior PGA Championship. American Junior Golf Association Team USA, the 2024 Junior President's Cup. Team USA versus International Team, played in Montreal, Quebec, Canada in September 2024. Asher represented and helped Team USA retain the President's Cup, winning 15-9 overall, defeating the International Team against the top junior international players. Asher himself recorded a 2-1 record in both team and single competitions. The representation for Team USA shows Asher welcomes any and all highly competitive environments. The 2024-2025 Texas High School golf season got underway last September. Asher compiled five wins through nine events, giving him a 55% winning percentage, 70.07 SHOK average through 17 rounds, 13 rounds in the 70s, four rounds in the 60s. Of those 17 rounds, 14 rounds were even par or better. 11 of those rounds were under par, a school record that Asher continues to set year after year. And now, if you follow golf closely, you'll understand this next part. This is a 6:36 starting time. Now on the tee from Spring Texas, winner of the 2024 Grizzly Invitational, 2024 Buster Bauer Memorial, 2025 Bernard Edwards Memorial, 2025 Region Two Regional Preview. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome your 2025 UIL 6A Texas State Champion, Golfer of the Year, from Grand Oaks High School, class of 2026, University of North Carolina commit, Mr. Asher Vargas.
How does that feel? Does it, does it feel normal? Are you okay with it at this point? I mean, state champion, 6A state champion at that, and Grand Oaks, I mean, I don't know what you guys are doing over there. Mr. Bush, where are you? I don't know what's going on over there, but it's, it's amazing, and it's obviously got some great leadership. Yeah, that's right. You guys, I mean, what an incredible opportunity that you have, and what an incredible gift that you've been blessed with. The amount of hard work and dedication that goes into your craft, I can't even imagine. I've, I've children that are athletes, but I've never had a state champion child, so I can't even begin to, to imagine how it feels for you to put in the amount of work and time that it takes for you to accomplish something so incredible. And I know if your parents are here, if you're, if you're here, stand up or wave. Yes, awesome. Well, we want to thank you too, because we can't do this alone, and this all comes from a great foundation, so we're thankful for you. You guys, I mean, to compete at this high of a level in athletics is not only a physical job, but it's a mental job, and you guys have balanced it so perfectly, and clearly you are very humble, and very humble over who you are, but just your excellence that is both on the field and on the golf course, but also in life and in school and in your communities, we are just so thankful, and we are so very proud of you. And on behalf of the Conroe ISD Board of Trustees, congratulations.
to just explain, we have, Trustee Dungen has been out sick for over a week, so I just wanted to say, please keep her in your prayers. And the Semler's have had a bit of a family emergency that happened just a couple hours before the board meeting, and just keep them in your prayers as well. So, sorry for their missing today. Moving on to Item 2G, Special Recognition for Mental Health Awareness Month. Dr. Tamika Taylor, Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, will offer a few remarks, followed by Trustee Nelson introducing some special guests.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Noel. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness, fostering understanding, and promoting the importance of mental well-being for everyone in our school community. As educators, we all play a role, but there is a group of people who support this work every single day, our school counselors and our district counseling staff. Whether they are working one-on-one with a student in crisis, helping a family navigate challenging times, or training staff on trauma-informed practices, their impact is powerful. Their work can be complex and emotional, and they do it with grit, determination, and dedication. At the district level, our counseling leaders help campuses develop strong systems, connect outside services and support, and stay ahead of the curve when it comes to mental health and wellness. Although we know mental health needs are ever-growing, this team constantly works behind the scenes to build systems that support students and families. So, tonight, as we acknowledge May as Mental Health Awareness Month, let us also recognize the unwavering commitment of our school and district counselors. On behalf of all of us, thank you for what you do each day. Your work matters, and more than that, it changes lives. Representing our school counselors tonight is our district guidance and counseling team, and they are here tonight, so when I call your name, please stand. Tiffany Rodriguez is our coordinator of guidance and counseling. Janice Lovelace is on I-45. She is our crisis specialist, so she is not present, but she is listening, so we certainly want to thank her. Dr. Tanya Merrick is our crisis specialist. Lindsay Taylor, mental health specialist. And Mary Ann Terubi-Artes, elementary counseling specialist.
Dr. Taylor, could they come up here so we could shake hands with them? Please, thank you.
Definitely, definitely. Please come up. They do, thank you.
May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so in, in honor of it, as was we honored our guidance counseling department, we also have some special guests that I'd like to bring up and share a little bit about an event that's coming up. We have County Judge, or Montgomery County Judge Echo Hudson, who is going to be joining us, and then Kim Hess from Cassidy Joint for Hope, to share a little bit about an upcoming event that's actually taking place tomorrow.
Hi, good evening. I want to say thank you to the Board of Trustees and to everyone here for asking us to come this evening, and I'm going to ask Kim to come up in just a minute, but I am Judge Echo Hudson, and I have a court here in Montgomery County, and I, as part of my court, preside over the Mental Health Treatment Court for the county. And so, Mental Health Awareness Month is very, very important to me, and last year, it came to my attention that our county does not have a county-wide community awareness event for Mental Health Awareness Month, and so, I decided to start one. And so, we put together Anchored in Unity, and this year is our second year, and I am here to bring awareness to our community in so many ways that we have been blessed in Montgomery County, but there is so much work to do. And so, it is tomorrow, and I know that Tiffany and I work together quite a bit, and so, she reached out to me and asked if I could come and speak about that this evening, and what we do there and what is happening there. So, anchored in unity is the idea that being anchored in your community, in your family, in the resources that you have, but also in understanding about yourself and the people around you, when a mental health crisis occurs, that you are more likely to be resilient and to come through that crisis in a healthy way when that crisis occurs in your life. And we know that one in five of us will have a mental health crisis in our lifetime. We know that 50% of people, and this is from the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the 50% of people in our lifetime will develop mental illness symptoms by the age of 14. We know that 75% of us will develop those symptoms by the age of 24. And so, it is so important in our schools and in our colleges that our young people understand what those signs and symptoms are when those start to occur, so that, that education happens so that we can get treatment. Because the other thing that really gets me, when I see people come into my court system, is that the average time from the development of those symptoms to the time of treatment and getting help is 11 years. And the things that we see happening in our community is the pain and suffering that we have seen recently, and not knowing what to do with the family and friends when someone reaches out and says, "I'm hurting and I need help." And so, being anchored in your community and understanding that there are resources out there, and starting a conversation with someone that you know who is a friend or a loved one, who says, "I'm having a hard time and I'm struggling," knowing that there's help and there's resources, or even just having that conversation with that friend is enough to bring them through that crisis. So, being anchored together is so important. So, I'm asking that all of you come and understand that there are so many organizations, I have, I think, 42 organizations coming that work in our community in all manner of capacities, and they are coming together to share with you those resources, so that all people who want to come, and this is, this is appropriate for everybody, all ages, it's going to be very short, it's at 5:30 tomorrow at Heritage Park here in Conroe, and it's free for everyone, and we all share all of the things that we know together. And Kim Hess is speaking, because she has personal experience. Our other speaker happens to be a school counselor, who is also a lived experience person, and she is a wonderful person. Her name is Ashley Wright, and she works here in the school districts in our county. So, when you are there, you will be able to place anchors on our wall of unity, and I brought some anchors for you, and I'm going to give these to our board as well, and these are the anchors, and each one of them has a mental health awareness ribbon on it that you can hang on our wall of unity. And because being able to do something is something that is so important, and so, you can put these anchors on our wall of unity in honor of someone that you know who has been either in a crisis or someone yourself, if that's what is important to you, and you can put their name on it, or you don't have to. But I invite you all to come, please learn, please share, and just be there in support of someone who has suffered in our community. I'm going to ask Kim to come and give us just a few brief words as well. Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight.
Thank you so much, Judge Hudson. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes tonight. I'll keep this short and sweet, because I will be sharing a little more tomorrow at the event, which I hope all of y'all will attend. But first, I want to thank the school board for, and all of our teachers and counselors for all that y'all do every day for our kids. You know, I know our teachers are extremely exhausted, and our counselors work so hard preparing our students for college, but what about addressing their mental health today, before college, while they're still in our schools? I stand before you as a mother who has lost a daughter, 16-year-old Cassidy, to suicide in 2015. It's been my mission ever since to make sure that no other family loses another student in our school district to suicide. However, sadly, we have recently lost more precious lives too soon to the silent epidemic. So, I ask, what could we have done better as a community, as a school district, to save these lives? Teachers have answered, and they tell me they need better suicide prevention training. Not just the minimum required training that they are currently required to take, but real training, so that they are equipped to recognize the signs when a student is struggling, when a student is suicidal. a student is suicidal, and prepare to ask those questions and to have those difficult conversations that can actually save a life. Our parents have responded. They want a crisis counselor on each campus every day so that they can help identify our at-risk students who are struggling, who may be suicidal, before they take their life, not to show up on our campus after we lose another life to suicide. So how can we help? What do you need from us? We don't want another mother who has lost another child to suicide stand before you a year from now, asking you these same questions. We need to do more. We need to prioritize our students' mental health, and I would love to continue this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Sorry to leave on such, now I have something positive to go to. That's such a heavy and sad reality. We have come to a time in special recognition where we celebrate and recognize a truly gifted leader, Dr. Knoll, as he prepares to take on an exciting new opportunity. While we are happy for what lies ahead of him, we can't help but feel the weight of his departure, because he has been impactful for Conroe ISD. Over the years, Dr. Knoll has built more than just a professional legacy, he's built relationships, I tell him that all the time, and a lasting sense of connection within and beyond our district. He has been the kind of leader who leads not from behind the desk, but from the heart, always present, always engaged, and has a superhero ability to summon reader man for guest appearances. One of the clearest examples of his steady leadership came during the COVID-19 pandemic, a time of deep uncertainty, fear, and rapidly changing circumstances. While navigating complex health risks and concerns, and his public health concerns, Dr. Knoll never lost sight of what mattered most, and he and his team struck a careful balance between protecting the students, health, and families, and ensuring our students could return to classrooms where they would thrive. His leadership has earned our district widespread recognition, not just from those of us who see his work up close every day, but from the broader community and even the national stage. Under his guidance, we've received numerous awards that reflect his understanding and commitment to openness and accountability. We were honored with multiple NICE awards and even Forbes recognition for the district, and he was recognized as one of America's top executives to work for. Accolades that speak to the excellence he has consistently driven across this district. Dr. Knoll, while you may be stepping into a new role, your legacy here is firmly rooted. You've helped shape not just our public image, but our reputation for an outstanding district. Thank you for your years of service and for being a leader who excelled at connecting with those around you. You will be missed, but more than that, you will be remembered, and you will always be part of this district's story. We wish you and Tanya the best going forward. Please join me in a round of applause and heartfelt thanks for Dr. Knoll.
Dr. Knoll, this is crafted from 70-year-old pine. It represents more than just the skilled carpentry. Like the foundation, Dr. Knoll, you have provided for our community and district, this aged wood has stood the test of time and now serves a new purpose. Created through the Grand Oaks Carpentry Program under the direction of Nathan Arians and student Miles Taylor, a ninth grader, this piece embodies our gratitude. We extend our sincere appreciation, Dr. Knoll, for establishing a foundation as enduring as the pine, and to the board for allowing us to contribute to this legacy that connects craftsmanship to future enlightenment, where education and craftsmanship merge to carve pathways for a new journey. Thank you for being our foundation.
And Dr. Knoll, sorry, you're still getting pictures there, sorry. I'd like to thank Dr. Blakelock, don't go anywhere, we're going to get a picture, but I'd like to thank Dr. Blakelock for helping organize the campaign, for getting the word out, for cards of thanks and letters of appreciation, and there's a few of them here to be stored in there and for you to be able to read, and any other Conroe ISD memories that you would like. There's more coming, I'm sure, but that's to get you started. I want you to know how much I appreciate you making this happen, both of you. You took what I was looking for and made it happen very quickly. Thank you.
I'm going to be pretty quick tonight. This is one of those deals where it's like the long goodbye. I shot a video for everybody, all the staff members saw it, I shot a video. That took a few days to shoot, couldn't shoot it at first, and so it's been a process of working through it, and certainly we're going to miss all the wonderful people here. You know, there's so many faces in here that have impacted our life, and we'll miss everybody dearly. I want to say this, because I haven't said this as much publicly, but there's, this job is hard. Okay? It is. It's a hard job. There's a harder job than this job. That's being the wife. You know, in this job, my skin gets pretty thick, so there's not a lot that impacts me, but it's not the same for the pre-K teacher at home. So the things that don't bother me weigh heavy at home, and I feel for her that she has to endure a lot of those things that I can just allow to roll right off of me. So, you know, we appreciate you all and know that, as I mentioned in the video, my parents are going to continue to live here, so we'll be around. You know, we'll be coming to town quite often, and we'll look forward to seeing you all in the community. We're not going all the way away. We'll still be around quite often, and for all our principals in the room, we'll see you guys tomorrow morning.
We are now at public comment. During this portion of the meeting, patrons who have signed up in advance may address the board in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Government Code, Chapter 551, and Board Policy BED. For comments regarding an issue on tonight's posted agenda, the board will defer its discussion of the issue until the item is reached on the agenda. For comments related to an issue that is not on the board's posted agenda, the board cannot deliberate or make a decision relating to that issue. We also ask that speakers address their comments to the board and not the audience. If any speaker's comments are regarding a complaint, the board directs you to its policies regarding complaints, which can be found on the district's website. If your purpose is in addressing the board to seek a remedy for your complaint, the board cannot discuss or respond to your concern until you have met the requirements of the appropriate district policy. The board wants to hear what all speakers have to say, and the board requests that the audience treat all speakers, regardless of their message, with respect. Each speaker will be given two minutes to present their comments to the board. Screens around the room will display the speaker's time. When the countdown time reaches zero, the next speaker will be called. Ms. Godfrey, please call the first person.
Patty Bosman. Charles Lane.
Last year, or last month, I had to be first, too.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's all right. I'm Susan. I'm in transportation at Woodlands. I met most of y'all last month. Just want to quick brief that I have spent my whole last month working at Oak Ridge. It's not my home station. Last month, when I met with you all, I let you all know that I believe we're somewhere short, 20 drivers. This month, we're up to 30. I said last month that this is very, very important. Transportation is my heart and soul. Not that teachers or anybody else doesn't matter, but this is where I've put my heart and soul. And I know a lot of it has increased this month due to retirees and whatnot, because a lot of my friends are leaving. They put in their 20, 30 years, but this is so, so very, very important. For one who's staying, I'm scared to death who's going to be here to help, because we have such a dire need, we are growing so fast, and I can't express enough how important it is that we do something as quick as possible to try to help our drivers. I appreciate everybody here at the board that has given me the time to speak. I want to last couple seconds, Dr. Knoll, I want to thank you personally, my children, my nieces and nephews, myself, went through Conroe schools, and you were there for pretty much all of it, so my parents, all of us, thank you, thank you, thank you very much for your time here. That's all. Thank you all very much, ladies.
Elena Lerdo de Tejada.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Knoll. I'm Rachel Goodlad. I'm president of Junior League, where I lead nearly 1,000 local women, partnering closely with CISD and its incredible team on many of our programs. I also serve on SHAC in the district-level planning committee, I was part of the bond committee, and I'm a proud CISD graduate from kindergarten through 12th grade. Tonight, I want to honor Dr. Knoll. Dr. Knoll is the kind of leader that you study, not just for how he shows up when it's easy, but for how he leads when it's hard. And in a time when the state budget is upside down, public education is under pressure, and community priorities often conflict, he has modeled calm, strength, and grace. He has taught more than just students. On every committee I've served, in every room I've watched him lead, he's given quiet lessons in leadership, showing how to navigate differences with respect, how to advocate with courage, and how to change your mind when new information calls for it. He has made me a better leader, and I thank you for that. I'm very excited for Dr. Knoll and Lake Travis ISD. They did not stumble into talent, they know exactly who they're getting. They just signed the number-one draft pick. But I'm also sad for our community because we are losing a steady, principled leader who built one of the strongest teams in Texas. As someone who serves on boards, I understand the demands of board service. It is not easy, but when you fight hard for a seat at the table, the responsibility doesn't stop there. I watch every CISD board meeting and workshop, often after the fact, since I'm in my own meetings, and I've been struck by a growing gap, a gap between the depth of leadership shown by our administration and the level of preparation from members of this board. Whether it's questions that reveal a lack of understanding of basic processes, or speaking to staff in ways that feel dismissive rather than collaborative, it is clear that respect, listening, and learning have too often taken a backseat to politics. As we look ahead, I hope the board chooses wisely, because this district deserves leadership at every level that reflect the same integrity, humility, and excellence that Dr. Knoll has modeled every day. Thank you, Dr. Knoll. You leave us so much better than you found us.
Dr. Knoll and the board. I'm Elaine Wallace. I'm a 20-year educator in the district and proud parent. I want to start, Dr. Knoll, by saying thank you for your years of dedication and service to Conroe ISD. Your compassion, transparency, and humility were exactly what we needed to navigate through COVID, and you provided the steady and calm leadership that we needed to navigate the ups and downs and to feel safe, and we appreciated that so much. Your transparency created buy-in from the community and helped them believe that even those hard decisions that they may not have agreed with, but may be really worth for the best. It's been said that if you love something, you have to set it free. We don't want to let you go, Dr. Knoll. Your legacy is going to be part of Conroe ISD forever, but we understand that you've done what you could here for now, and it's time to let you go where your leadership and wisdom can be utilized to its full potential. We wish you the best in Lake Travis, but if they don't treat you right, you can text us. We'll come get you anytime, day or night, no questions asked. We will bring you home. To our school board trustees, I would like to close by sharing that as a 20-year CISD teacher, "All Means All" has been a core part of our district as long as I've been here. It's not just a catchphrase, it's our value system, it is a core belief. And as you begin your search for a new superintendent, I must remind you that we are a diverse and large district that represents all imaginable cross-sections of society. You've been elected and consequently trusted with a huge responsibility to all of our students and families to find the most qualified superintendent to represent all those diverse needs. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Knoll, members of the board. 17 years ago, my husband, Chris Kempel, came home daily praising his new principal, Curtis Knoll. I was nearly jealous until I met him and instantly saw what Chris saw, a genuine, smart, funny, and compassionate leader who believed in everyone, regardless of their role or age. Little did I know how much this man would impact our family. Dr. Knoll pushed Chris out of his comfort zone, and his belief in Chris led him to become an assistant principal at Knox and eventually the principal at Pete. His career goal was made possible by Dr. Knoll's confidence in him. I hope you always remember, once a cub, always a cub. I started as a Spanish teacher at Pete, and thanks to Dr. Knoll, my passion for teaching was reignited. He coincidentally hired Amber de Beaumont and I on the same day, and we immediately became family. He encouraged us to be the best teachers, which inspired us to both become District Teachers of the Year. She went on to become an administrator, and I became an instructional coach for student support service. His influence didn't stop there. It has extended to our daughter, Emma, who now dreams of becoming an elementary teacher. While she won't have the chance to take a picture with you at district-wide, know that her ambition to be the best teacher is driven by your example. Those of us who know you well know who's to blame for this, Mama and Papa Knoll. If they hadn't done such a phenomenal job, this wouldn't be nearly as difficult. Your leaving shoes that no one will ever fill, and your own legacy has impacted the thousands of people who are privileged to know you. We all wish you the best and are excited for Lake Travis ISD to also benefit from your leadership. You will be missed, but rest assured that wherever you go, we know you'll always do right. that wherever you go, we know you'll always do right. Thank you.
Michael Baker.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me here. My name is Mike Baker. I am a proud graduate of Conroe High School in 1969, and I've been practicing law in Beaumont, Texas since 1977. I am here to enthusiastically nominate James Howard Moore for the naming of the Ag Center at Caney Creek, Conroe, and Timber Mills Feeders. I participated in Mr. Moore's Ag program when I was in high school here for three years. I'd reached a point in my life, as many ninth graders do, when I was kind of at a fork in the road. My parents saw the fork going a bad way or a good way, and the good way that they pointed me in the direction of was Mr. Moore's Ag program. He was a tireless worker. He came back to Conroe to start. He didn't start the program. It had been defunct since before World War II. And he was usually working with students from daybreak to the end of the day. He was at my house many nights with my projects and just a tireless worker, devoted, committed to his students, and very deserving of this recognition. I was able to have a very, what do I want to say? A good project in that I had a Jersey female that won or placed highly in virtually every state fair in Texas. And that's the other thing. Mr. Moore did not hesitate to jump in a pickup truck, put the trailer behind the truck, and haul off. It's just something that he's very deserving of this. Thank you. His son, Don, and daughter-in-law, Nita, are here, and his daughter Sally are here.
Lorraine Rice.
Good evening, President Odenweller, trustees, and Dr. Noel. This evening, I come as a retired teacher and as a resident in Montgomery County with gratitude in my heart. This gratitude is for the fact that I live in Montgomery County here in Texas, not the one in Maryland. Here in our Montgomery County, during my almost 25 years of teaching in this district, there were several times when parents asserted their rights for their children to opt out of activities or lessons. Some asked to not verbally pledge to the flag of the United States as it violated their religious beliefs. Some opted out of the health lessons given by the P.E. teachers regarding reproduction, wanting to provide that information themselves. I never had a parent need to opt out of library books, and for that, I'm grateful. However, any parent with students in this district who find themselves in that situation will surely be respected and their parents' wishes followed. This Montgomery County here in the great state of Texas differs from the one in Maryland because we know that children belong to their parents. We should all be grateful for this. Also, to you, Dr. Noel, you had many memorable times as superintendent, however, like seems like so many others. Remember you teaching in the crazy times of COVID and your weekly videos where you had to lead in such a hard and unknown time? You had to be a dad and a superintendent simultaneously, and it was a challenging time. But you had to make hard choices, and you did that by setting aside your dad heart and leading as a superintendent. You were steady and calm when it was chaotic. For that, I thank you. God bless you and your family. I have complete confidence in this school board, and I thank you for all you do for CISD families. May every educator and person who works at a school have a wonderful summer. Thank you.
Megan Munoz. Lisa Hernandez.
Good evening, Board. When we talk about school, we talk about grades, test scores, and college readiness. But we never talk about the mental state of the students sitting in those classrooms. The truth is, there is a silent crisis happening right now, and nobody's doing anything. 75% of teens between 13 and 17 are dealing with some sort of stress. In Texas, nearly 1 in 4 high school students have seriously considered suicide. That number used to be 16%, and now it's 22. What is our response to that? In Montgomery County, the suicide rate is 16.3 per 100,000 people. That is higher than Fort Bend. That is higher than Harris County. That's here, and that is us, and we're not okay. Let me explain what it feels like to be a student right now. It's juggling deadlines and group projects with the constant fear of falling behind. It's crying in the bathroom between periods and pretending nothing happened. It's staying up all night, not hanging out with friends, and certainly not relaxing, but overthinking, panicking, and breaking down. And sometimes, it's wondering if disappearing would finally make the pressure stop. So when we finally build up the courage to ask, let me tell you what some students come up with. They won't do anything. I'm scared I'll get in trouble for saying I'm not okay. They'll just call my parents and make it worse. They'll think I'm being dramatic. We're not being dramatic. We're being honest. And it's terrifying. Even our parents see it. A third of 75% of U.S. parents said that their kids were showing signs of anxiety or depression. The 60% of teens who needed it will never get it. Let's not pretend that we're immune to trauma just because we're young. Hate speech still happens in our hallways. Deportation jokes are told like they're funny. A girl points to a single LGBTQ-plus student and says, "God will never love you." Where is the compassion? And where is the care? These are not just numbers. These are our classmates. I could be napping right now. I could be annoying my parents. But I am standing in front of you today begging for some attention to this. I hope you consider. Thank you.
Reese Hunt.
To start off, I'd like to thank the members of the school board and our staff, and of course, give a huge thanks to Dr. Noel, who I've met a couple of times, and he's always been incredibly kind and has done an amazing job running this district for the past seven years. Dr. Noel, I believe that I speak for so many students, educators, and parents. I want to say that although we're sad to see you go, we truly wish you the best at your new position. As for the Board, as you search for a new superintendent, I ask you, on behalf of all our hard-working teachers, students, and staff, to find someone who truly understands what it's like to be a teacher, someone who can love every kid in our district as if they were their own child, someone who could walk the halls of one of our schools not as everyone's boss, but as their friend and as their equal. What our school district, one of the best and most respected in our great state of Texas, really needs is someone like Superintendent Noel. I cannot emphasize enough the importance of hiring someone who will not allow our schools to fall behind what we have achieved in the past decade. In the past 10 years, Conroe ISD has been ranked as the top school district out of the top 700 large employers in the nation and is recognized as one of the best workplaces in Texas, all while maintaining its reputation as one of the most transparent school districts in the nation in all aspects. This year, that transparency, which is undoubtedly one of the most vital aspects of our success, was damaged when the school board, disregarding any input from teachers, students, or experts, adopted the Blue Bond and Learning Curriculum, which is widely considered by educators to be restrictive to teachers and incredibly ineffective at encouraging learning. The main factor that was taken into consideration when the curriculum was selected was its incentivization of biblical content, but its inclusion of Christian literature only stands to mask its absolute ineffectiveness. Our district excels in motivating its students and teachers to work hard and develop a passion for education. We excel in being trusted by our teachers. We excel in being a family. Do not betray our trust, destroy our passion, and wreck our home, just as Jesus loved the children. We should too. So why would you choose a program that only serves to harm them? Board, I say this with an equal sense of dread and hope. Choose for our children someone who cares. Thank you.
Suma Paruchy.
Hello. As some of you remember, I'm Sumi Paruchy and a senior at the Woodlands High School. I couldn't help but notice the irony in your opening prayer. You talk about blessing us with love, community, laughter, and joy, notably for seniors who are graduating. Yet here I am, standing and speaking on behalf of a community that also deserves love, community, and joy while I sacrifice the little time I have left with my friends here. I originally came here with the intent to speak on the state of mental health in CISD schools, which hasn't changed and continues to harm students. But you could say that God had other plans when I was alerted of the latest policies you're attempting to pass in the name of parental rights. Trans and queer students in your district exist, whether you like to believe that or not. Trans youth are already at a significant higher risk, and your gender fluidity policies only make the following numbers worse. In the past year, 46% of trans and non-binary youth reported seriously considering or attempting suicide. That's more than double the 22% reported by all youth. Schools adopting affirming policies led to a 4% decrease in attempted suicide rates. Every number out there suggests that we should be pushing policies in favor of protecting trans youth, not subjecting them to more violence. I'd like to remind you that the KDISD was under federal investigation for violations of Title IX when they passed a similar policy. Instead of wasting time on punitive policies that only hurt students, take actions to protect them. I'd like to propose an amendment for your consideration. In the pronoun usage section, I'd like to request you change that staff members must comply with preferred names and pronouns if there's written parental consent, rather than "may." After all, it's a question of parental rights. Additionally, in the section about sex education, it bans discussion of STDs and explicit diagrams of genitalia, something that is required by TEES. Not only does it violate state policy, but youth who are unable to identify genitalia are less likely to report child abuse. These policies only harm students who otherwise wouldn't be able to learn because their parents never discussed it with them. And since I have extra time, I'd like to discuss mental health. I've seen and heard firsthand how students across CISD are facing mental health struggles with schools either being a major contributing factor or unable to provide adequate support. I urge you to hire youth psychologists for every campus in the district so that when students are struggling, they get the support they need and deserve. The continuous neglect of Conroe ISD to change things despite the continuous suicide speaks to where priorities lies, and I hope you center future discussions about the real needs of students.
Jeff Sedler.
Greetings. This district couldn't be more fortunate than to have you seven on this board. Recently, I watched a young girl who was a champion in the sport of fencing have to surrender her match because she was up against a stronger male. This girl was cheated out of her dream because her opponent had to have his delusion on her. Who's going to protect her mental health? What if I told you that I was a 37-year-old Chinese woman? Would you believe it? Students here have been brainwashed. Have you ever pondered that if you have to ask anyone else to affirm anything, then maybe it's not true? It's not our job to maintain left-wing delusions. The truth isn't what you feel, and sooner or later, the truth will find you. Have any of these board members ever demanded that you believe what they do? Have they needed you to affirm that they're all female? Have they ever given you an ultimatum, take an experimental shot, or lose all of your income? Have they required that you believe in Christianity or lose custody to your children? Have any of these board members ever demanded that you address them with their preferred adjectives or face jail time? Have any of these board members ever advised that you give a child brain-changing hormones and performance-enhancing drugs? Remember when that was illegal? Have any of these board members ever put their own children in charge of a medical procedure just such as irreversible body-mutilating surgery? Who does that? A cult does that. Is it too much to ask to let nature take its course and leave these kids to their own organic development until adulthood? For the deluded among us, there are no trans people. There are no hippopotamus people. There are no giraffe-rabbit people. There are just people. If you want to invent these things, fine. Then perhaps you can help me finish my sci-fi novel about talking two-legged dogs with four vaginas. Blessings and good fortunes, Dr. Noel. Thank you.
April Kersey.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Noel. I want to share some data regarding the risks of cell phones to student well-being and learning. Youth who feel connected to school were 48 to 66% less likely to have mental health issues. This tells us in-person connections during school matter a lot. Teens who spend three hours or more a day on electronic devices are at a 35% higher risk of suicide than those who spend less than an hour on them. This tells us that total time on our phones matter. And by allowing phones in school, we are increasing our children's mental health risk with little reward. Studies show that when smartphones are away, test scores increase up to 14%. This tells us phones hinder academic outcomes, in some cases by a letter and a half. In 2024, the U.S. Surgeon General stated, "In light of the ongoing youth mental health crisis, it is no longer possible to ignore social media's potential contribution to the pain that millions of children and families are experiencing." The data shows cell phones are at the heart of the mental health crisis, and it's time for action. CISD needs a strong cellphone policy for next year. The current guidelines are not consistently enforced and are not strong enough. Cellphone use during school is a community-shared problem. CISD oversees our children's seven hours a day. As a parent, limiting my child's phone usage does very little good if the school allows the students around them to be on their phones, making it impossible for my child to make the necessary personal connections and distracting from academic work. I am hopeful the Board will implement a phone-free school policy, K through 12. This will take courage and leadership, but it is what's best for our students. Many districts, some larger than CISD, have already proven this concept works. Thank you for your consideration. Lastly, I wish you, Dr. Noel, the best in your next endeavor. Thank you.
Rashida Notiger.
Good evening. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Board for my opportunity here to come and express my opinions. 1 in 4 American teens have struggled to afford menstrual products. Over 80% of them have missed class time or know someone who has because they couldn't access them. This is period poverty, and it's affecting our schools. And let's clarify that having period products in the nurse's office is not a viable solution. Quite frankly, it's inaccessible in large three-floor high schools such as the Woodlands High School, which I attend, and remains inequitable. I never imagined I'd have to stand up here and ask for something so fundamental, especially in a room full of women. Yet today, I'm here to request that our schools provide free menstrual products in student restrooms, not as a luxury, but as a necessity. When a girl discovers that she's started her period and finds nothing available, she's not just caught off guard. She's left vulnerable, forced to choose between sacrificing her comfort, her confidence, or her education. We don't make students search for soap or toilet paper, so why do we treat menstrual products any differently? This is not simply a matter of hygiene. This is about dignity. This is about equity, about whether we truly care about every student in our care. Districts like Austin and Dallas have already stepped up. So I ask you, what has held us back? A lack of visibility or discomfort? Because make no mistake, when a student is humiliated by an unmet biological need, it doesn't just disrupt her day. It erodes her trust in the institution that's meant to support her. The time to correct this is now. Install free menstrual products in every student restroom, not eventually, but immediately. I hope you will give this problem the due consideration it deserves. Thank you.
Susan Scruggs.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Noel. Tonight, I just wanted to mention a few things that, to my knowledge, have not been addressed as of yet. If they have, then I stand to be corrected. During your campaigns, all of you declared you would remove completely out of the schools and classrooms sexually pervasive and harmful books and materials and not be ordering new books on these topics. The community has demanded that this be done in the campaigns that you ran. Has this been done? Secondly, you ran on transparency with teachers and parents and constituents, even offering town hall meetings to discuss controversial topics. Has that been done? What about books like Lilly and Duncan that contain detailed information on resources on how to gender transition, which is illegal in Texas? Have these books been removed? And what's happened to Perks of Being a Wallflower? The book about violent and abusive sex, abortion, suicide, has that been- The book about violent and abusive sex, abortion, suicide, has that been removed? Taxpayers in Montgomery County do not want their tax money spent on this type of material. Finally, in December two thousand twenty-four, I brought to your attention the harmful and exposing swimsuit uniforms of the swim team and water polo teams at Woodlands High School. I forwarded photos showing the buttocks of young girls standing at swim team events and in the open lobby, exposing their hindsight. I've asked that you implement new swimsuit selection criterion for the coaches or whoever selects the swimsuits at Woodlands High School. Has that been done? It's very important. We don't want grooming going on, and there have been grooming lawsuits in education and schools across Texas. It's May, and I thought you would have adequate time. Thank you very much, Dr. Knoll. I wish you the best. Thank you for all you've done.
Cam Earthman.
Good evening. Dr. Knoll, I wanted to come tonight because you've had a huge impact on my life, not just as a employee, a former employee, but also as a parent. I tried to put all my thoughts together, and then I kept getting too wordy, so I just made a list. Thank you for being a great principal when my kids started with Pete Junior High. Thank you for creating a welcoming environment at Conroe High School. It is a legacy that Dr. Smith has continued. I recently moved, and Annabelle's only requirement is that she would still attend Conroe High School. It was a non-negotiable. Thank you for always asking about my kids throughout the years and caring. Thank you for being a voice of reason and bringing a group of people together to do great things in Conroe I S D. Thank you for believing in me and helping me and myself, believe in myself. Thank you for always serving the lemonade and tea and being the last person to always sit down at any celebration that we've ever had. Thank you for showing all of us how to keep moving even when it's really, really hard. Thank you for being the model of integrity and honor. Thank you for being the person that people work hard for, not because they are scared of you, but because they don't want to disappoint you. Thank you for having us think through things, questioning us, giving us suggestions, encouraging us to be the very best to make sure we did things, the right things, for kids and all the adults. That is what is amazing about your leadership. Even when you didn't have all the answers, you relied on the expertise of those around you while still providing guidance and listening and trusting. And all of those times under your leadership, I knew and trust that you have the big picture in mind. We're super happy that you get to go to Lake Travis, but we're super sad. For the board, make no mistake, this is on you. You shake your head and say, "You're all for mental health, but you cut out social-emotional learning from our schools." Please do better.
Lynda Evans.
Good evening, board and Dr. Knoll. Dr. Knoll, I'm speaking to you, and I'm speaking to you with mixed emotions. I am so sorry you are leaving our district, but I'm so happy you have found a wonderful new position in a wonderful school district close to Austin, woo-hoo, in which you can share your amazing talents. Thank you for your service to C I S D. You've led this district with dignity and dedication and the highest ethical standards. All these qualities seem to be in short supply nowadays, but you have them in spades. You did not let politics, a desire for power, or a personal agenda drive your decisions. You showed grace under pressure so many times. You used your professional training, your extensive experience, and your own strong moral, personal compass to make decisions. You took seriously this district's motto, "All means all." You said, "All students deserve the best possible education, regardless of who they are, where they come from, what they believe, what they look like." It didn't matter. You loved them all. Thank you. Our son and his wife just recently moved to, guess where? Lake Travis. And they said, now, they're empty nesters, and they said, "Oh, what a shame." They said, "That community is so excited. They've gotten the word, 'You're coming.'" They are so happy, they said, "It's almost like they're getting an early Christmas present." Our loss is your gain. Thank you for your many years of work with C I S D and for being an example to all of us, and to the children most especially. Godspeed in your new adventure. You will be missed.
Rachel Walker.
Good evening, board, Dr. Knoll. Guiding a school district of this size is no small feat. Doing so through a global pandemic is nothing short of heroic. Your commitment to our students, teachers, and families has left an indelible mark on Conroe I S D. You've created a community that feels like family. I mean, the comments just speak for themselves. I know this was an incredibly difficult decision for you, one that surely brought you many sleepless nights, but your reputation at C I S D cannot be tarnished. You can walk away with your head held high, knowing that never once did you put politics over people. And do you know what my favorite part about you is, besides the cool glasses? It's your ability to make everybody that you encounter feel important. You have a remarkable gift of making people feel seen and heard. It's incredible. And so your departure is a huge loss for us, but man, we were so lucky to have you. You've shown us what true leadership looks like, compassionate, resilient, and student-focused. May all of your school board meetings end at a reasonable hour. May you be met with a spirit of collaboration from those who value your expertise, and may you never again hear the phrase "porn in the library." Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Stuart Schroeder.
Members of the board and Dr. Knoll, Dr. Knoll, this is for you. I hope I can get through this. I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership and service to the Conroe Independent School District. I found you to be available, open, and transparent. While serving on the two thousand twenty-three Bond Planning Committee, I appreciated all those Zoom meetings, whether the committee members could ask questions of senior leadership regarding any aspect of those bonds. Your positive attitude regardless of the circumstances has always been refreshing. But your only fault is that Florida Gator degree on your resume. Since I travel around Texas quite a bit, and Ms. Gladys could verify that, when I'm in the hill country, I'll connect with you, and we can go have some fresh homemade apple pie at the Blue Mountain Cafe in Marble Falls. If you don't like apple pie, they have other kinds as well. Wishing you all the best. Thank you.
Keith Cartwright.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Knoll. I'm here to talk about a wonderful lady who I call Mom, Lynn Cartwright. She, I would certainly appreciate it if you would seriously consider her for naming a school in her memory. Mom taught Conroe High School for forty years. The same subject, the same grade, same school, forty years, right across the street. If you look out here, I can see where her class was when I was a little kid, when I was sick a time or two. She brought me to school, and I sat in the classroom, and she taught class. And she taught in the Conroe High School main building for about ten or twelve years until they made the freshman annex, and then from nineteen seventy-five or six until she retired in two thousand four, she taught in the freshman annex, which was recently demolished, a sad day for some of us. But Mom not only taught in Conroe, she taught students from the entire county. In nineteen sixty-four until about nineteen seventy-six, Conroe High School was the only school, high school, in Conroe I S D. There wasn't any Grand Oaks, there wasn't McCullough High School, there wasn't the Woodlands High School, there was Conroe High School. She taught students from Conroe, she taught students from Montgomery, Willis, Cut &amp; Shoot, Grangerland, Oak Ridge North, Booty Road, what was to become the Woodlands. We were here before there was any Woodlands, and she taught students from all walks of life. She loved teaching, it was her calling, and she was more than a teacher, she was a friend to many students after their graduation. And I think that you have heard from a number of her students and colleagues already about her and her wonderful career here at Conroe High School, and I would like to urge you to name a school in her memory. Thank you.
Truly High School.
Good evening, board and Dr. Knoll. You're pretty amazing. I haven't been here that long, but it's wonderful to hear the love and affection that the constituents and the parents have here. It's a beautiful thing to have a team like you. I was thinking about excellence and aiming high. Process is so difficult, but if you aim small, you'll miss small. But always aim for the best for everyone. I know everyone can always be included, but it doesn't mean that your heart isn't considering everyone. I have a list here that I wanted to just point out. There have been plans for this great nation, the United States of America, against those who are globalists, who want to reduce us to citizens of the world. They have forty-five different goals that they want to meet, and I just want to mention a couple. Get control of schools and use them as transmission belts for socialism and current communist propaganda. Soften the curriculum. Get control over teacher associations and put party line in textbooks. Then there's one that says, "Eliminate all laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of free speech." Twenty-nine says, "Discredit the American Constitution by calling it inadequate. Old-fashioned, out of step with modern needs, a hindrance to cooperation between nations on a worldwide basis." Your task is grave, but it's wonderful, and you have a helper who's going to walk with you through the process as you choose your new superintendent. And thank you so much, Dr. Knoll, for everything you've done. God bless you all.
Carrie Freemeyer.
President, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. Speaking as president of Texas State Teachers Association Conroe Branch, I want to say how grateful we are for all your support and collaboration, your dedication, and exceptional leadership. Your ability to navigate challenges our district faced throughout your time as Conroe I S D's exemplar superintendent and keeping our community calm and focused in a positive, professional manner has been outstanding, to say the least. Thank you so much. And I speak to you, members of the board, in a few hours, hopefully minutes, but in a few hours, you're going to be going behind closed doors, and you're going to be discussing potential superintendents. Please keep these traits in mind, these quality traits in mind, as you go back and you start looking and thinking about a superintendent. I remember when he came on board as our superintendent, and people were saying, "Boy, Dr. Knoll, you're going to have a hard time filling Dr. Stockton's shoes." I remember it. And you were saying, "Those shoes are big, I don't know if I can do it." And by golly, you did it. And you did it with honor, grace, integrity. Keep those things in mind as you go into looking at your next superintendent, our superintendent, the one that's going to make sure that all means all. I also want to put in a little plug for what Keith Cartwright said about his mom. I was one of her students, so she was amazing and made language arts so driven and so passionate and inspirational. And thank you, guys, and we're going to miss you.
Tina Orball.
Hi, y'all. I haven't seen you in a long time. This is great. Really respect all of you, Dr. Knoll. We pray that when you go forward, that things will work out good for you. The one thing that I'd like to note, like to say is, keep God first. God's first, and the children are second. And once you have that in your mind at all times, I honestly think that God will help you through all your decisions that you have to make, whether it's you, the school board here, or whether you have to go to another school. God's awesome, and He will find all the ways to help you get through it. We pray that you will look to God and analyze your heart and focus on the children and what is best for them. Fight Satan, because Satan's here. He is here. He is trying to change things and fight and have people fight against each other, which is not good, and we need to work together. And yes, we are trying to fight the porn in the library, and we are trying to fight the L B G T Q, because these young minds don't even know anything about it, and then they're being taught to get into it, and it's only one percent, not only, but that one percent, ninety percent of those one percent wish they never had an operation. They need to have counseling, they need to have a lot of people working together. We hope that you provide those with considering consent of the parent, and maybe the parents and the counselors and the teachers can work together and help them. And that's a big thing, you know? It depends if you are older and need help, and they transition, but at this point, they just need help getting through what's happening with them. May God bless you all, and so good to see you. And Dr. Knoll, God bless you. Thank you.
Rianna Moller.
So two minutes isn't a lot of time, and I'm really verbose, so I'm just going to get straight to the point. Let's take a close look at your draft on page two hundred eight from this agenda. Section three, underneath certain instructional requirements and prohibitions, the one about critical race theory and anything that could be tangentially imagined to relate to it. The language here isn't just vague, it's dangerously broad. Terms like "any connection to," "influenced by," or "consistent with" are so open-ended that nearly any discussion related to race, history, inequality, or identity could fall under the policy, this policy's restrictions. At first, I was surprised by how unclear it was, but then I realized that vagueness may be the point, because vague language gives policymakers flexibility. Now, to be clear, I'm not an advocate for critical race theory. In fact, CRT is a graduate-level legal framework, rarely if ever taught in K through twelve classrooms, but this policy doesn't just prohibit CRT, it prohibits any idea that's even perceived as consistent with it. That includes evidence-based instruction on redlining, civil rights, systemic inequalities, or implicit bias, all of which are part of mainstream social studies and history standards across the country. This directly contradicts your own stated goals on page two oh six, underneath Classroom Discussion, where y'all want to, and I quote, "Ensure that multiple viewpoints about the issue are represented by introducing an unexpected viewpoint when necessary. How can students form their own opinions and viewpoints if the information they're allowed to learn from is artificially narrowed? How can we expect teachers to actually teach when they don't know what they are and aren't allowed to say because the policies are too vague, when they're afraid they'll say something that has been influenced by ideas about race?" That's almost everything in history, by the way. And what exactly are systemic discrimination ideologies? That term is never defined, and I wouldn't be surprised if no one here could tell me what that means. Without a clear definition, enforcement becomes arbitrary and subjective. When one teacher sees it as a historical fact, another administrator might see that as a violation. In alignment with most of the other speeches, let's bring up Dr. Knoll. If we want to have a continuation of the excellence he brought, don't let us fall behind. Don't restrict the knowledge we have access to, because we will fall behind. Fun fact, many of the banned books in this district fall under the list of books to use for the AP Literature exam. Don't restrict this further. This is partisanship described as policy. We should be teaching students how to think, not what to think, and certainly... We should be teaching students how to think, not what to think, and certainly not what to avoid. Thank you.
Alex Hant.
My name is Alex Hant, and I've been the CISD district since second grade, so roughly 10 years, as I'm one of the graduating seniors you mentioned in your opening prayer. For two of those 10 years now, I've been mourning the loss of my best friend to mental health. Her loss has made me unable to focus in class, negatively impacted my performance on exam, and is the reason the attendance coordinator at the Woodlands High School knows me by first and last name. I have never been impacted by someone using the term Latinx instead of Latina. I have never seen my grade slip because of the bathroom another student chose to use. And I have never been absent because someone discussed the way Black people have been oppressed in America. Your partisanship is evident. Your priorities are transparent. You legislate the culture wars that make headlines for Fox News and TPUSA, not the policies that would help students stay alive. Your version of social and emotional learning, it isn't about emotional regulation or access to mental health care, it's about rejecting victimhood mentality and encouraging students to become spiritual leaders, which, aside from being narrow-minded, raises legal questions about whether you're favoring certain beliefs over others. When former trustee Chase proposed a resolution on mental health in September, it was trustee Nelson who incited debate over if it had funding attached the same day I gave a speech for the first time regarding my best friend who had passed. I not only found this offensive, but egregious. Instead of auditing our district's gaps in mental health support, you asked TE to help you crack down on books on obscenity defined by your own politics and not our realities. The board is not addressing what's harming students most. And I am asking, on behalf of every friend I've lost, the students you've heard speak today and will hear speak next, that you do better. My peers will be discussing what you should not pass, things like EMB and the term Latinx ban, but I want to remind you of what you should be passing. You should be doing comprehensive mental health reform. A prayer at the beginning of a meeting and the wonderful Judge Hudson coming and speaking is not enough, and you debating instead of actually doing things does nothing to stop the next child. Thank you.
Lana Lindsay.
I'd like to start by acknowledging Alex Hant and thanking her for pointing out the inconsistencies of the school board. At the beginning of this meeting, you guys pledged to invest in the students' future and education, and I would say, what an amazing goal. I totally agree. And because of that, I'd like to propose an amendment to the Potentially Pornographic Material section on page 220 of the agenda that is currently being drafted to ensure the same end goal that you guys allegedly support. Specifically, I would like to ask that the Board of Trustees employ a committee of CISD librarians to have the final say within the review of what material is considered porn in the library versus educational. I'd like to read a verse for you, since a lot of people here adhere to a certain religion. Whoever loves instruction loves knowledge, but he who hates correction is stupid. And I would like to hope that this committee is open to correction, specifically when it's done to protect our students. The policy includes review of very broad topics, STDs, sexually explicit acts, and human sexuality, but doesn't define the actual implications of that. Librarians are the most qualified people to review this, because they hold masters specifically pertaining to fields of literary analysis and critical reviews of materials. It is librarians who should have the final say in what is appropriate and what is inappropriate and what is educational, because the lack of sexual health awareness isn't just isolated to high school, but follows students into adulthood. If you can't force kids to practice abstinence in high school, you can't force them to do it in adulthood. Without any understanding on safe, consensual, and protected intimacy, not every household educates their kids, and not all parents know best, because if they did, child sexual abuse would not exist, and child abuse in general would not exist. I'd also like to address the woman who brought up the perks of being a wallflower and how that was also porn in the library. If you had ever read the book, you would know that it specifically pertains to a child named Charlie who considers suicide because his sexual abuse is never reported and he doesn't address it. If you actually cared about students' mental health, you'd prioritize books like these so that they learn what to do when they are abused and don't instead choose to be silenced. Thank you.
I'm going to repeat the ones who weren't here. Patty Bosman, Charles Lane, Elena Lerdo Tejada, and Megan Munoz. That's it.
All right. The time is 7:55, and the Board is going to take a short 10-minute break. The time is 8:08, and we are back in session, and we are up to the motion to accept the consent agenda, but I do have a request by a few trustees to pull Item D, Consider and Approve the Adoption of Open Education Resource Transition Plan out of Consent Agenda. So do I have a motion to accept everything else presented with the exception of Item D, and we'll pull it up for discussion afterwards?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. Five, zero, and the motion carries. All right. Moving on to the Consider and Approve the Adoption of the Open Education Resource Transition Plan. I know that there were a few questions on this in addition to ones that we asked prior, so I would just open the discussion. If you have something you'd like to ask, could you turn your light on your microphone on so I'll know who to call on? Okay. All right. Trustee Nelson?
Oh.
No?
Yes. Okay, hi. Hi, good evening, President Odenweller.
Oh, sorry.
Members of the Board, Dr. Knoll. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Upshaw. She's taken a little bit of a break this evening to be a mom. As you know, her twins are graduating, and so it's that time of year. But I'm here to make myself available to you and answer any questions you should have about our transition plan.
I thank you for that, because I know it was going to be in Consent Agenda, which is why I didn't look up to say hello. So I apologize for that.
No, you're fine.
So I have, okay, we're still back to you, trustee Nelson. Do you have any questions for?
I do. I have a few questions. I spoke to Dr. Upshaw earlier this morning. Forgive me, I'm chewing a mint right now, and I wasn't prepared.
I'm so sorry.
And she was very kind and gracious to walk me through the process. There's a pretty lengthy report that it needs to be submitted in Consent Agenda regarding Bluebonnet. And I just had one question that was, I needed some further clarification on, and it was the religious, what do you call it, the religious aspect or the religious portion?
Yes, the lessons that are based on religious texts.
Okay, so that was a concern of mine. I put in a phone call to TEA, the person we're working with on our transition plan, and then I put in a phone call to an SBOE member. And my concern is the ability to make modifications to the curriculum. Because the curriculum, well, I went back to 1605, which is where the HQIM is, it came from, and there's a section in there that says, gosh, where are we? Section 31.0721, number two, the district provides, oh, no, except for, as provided by subsection B, open education resource instructional materials made available under this section may not remain available once amended or modified unless the material is amended or modified, is reviewed under section 31.023, and included on the list of approved instructional materials maintained by the State Board of Education. So to me, it sounds like if the material, the curriculum, is modified, it is no longer SBOE-approved material.
Certainly, it's a consideration. I think that verbiage is there so that districts are very clear that you should not be making changes to the lessons. They're built on a progression of skills, right? And there's also the integrity of the high-quality text that, you know, I know that they want to preserve, that's very important to them. However, the, we've been in contact with TEA, and we've asked those questions, and they do allow us to make some changes, but at the district level. It's certainly not at the campus or teacher level. Any changes have to come through the approval of the district level, but there is, that is certainly a great question.
Can I ask a clarifying question? We are not altering, we are not altering the Bluebonnet curriculum. What we are providing is a parallel alternate lesson. We are not changing the Bluebonnet lesson, correct? We're just, we're creating an alternate lesson to go alongside of it.
Correct. There are some lessons where the text is definitely a religious text, and so we would, if a parent wanted an alternate text, then we would have to change the text. We couldn't use that text.
We would need to alter it or amend it or modify it.
Correct. We would have, we would have to adjust the lesson to obviously correspond with the text that is going to.
But we're creating an alternate assignment for a child. We're not changing the curriculum for all students.
No, we are not. It would just be a change for the particular student that the parent has requested an exemption.
Yeah, and then regarding the exemption, what exemption are you referring to that a parent would request?
So according to, let me quote exactly what the Texas Education Code 26.01A, "A parent is entitled to remove the parent's child temporarily from a class or other school activity that conflicts with the parent's religious or moral beliefs if the parent presents or delivers to the teacher of the parent's child a written statement authorizing the removal of the child from class or other school activity."
Okay, so a religious exemption is what you're stating. So when I spoke to the SBOE member, they reminded me that there is no religion in this curriculum and that it is Old Testament and New Testament, which is codified in Chapter 28 of the Texas Education Code .002, "Or each school district that offers kindergarten through grade 12 shall offer as a required curriculum an enrichment curriculum that includes religious literature, including the Hebrew scriptures, Old Testament, and New Testament, and its impact on history and literature."
I understand.
So if there's no religion in the curriculum, why are we modifying it or amending it? If there are historical references?
Yes.
Why are we modifying and amending it?
There are historical references, and so there are some pieces where there's just like one sentence, there might be a picture, there might be a word, that just gives a little bit of context to the history that's being shared. In those cases, we don't recommend that we make any change to the text.
Well, there were different color codings on the chart that was presented in the plan, and so specifics were laid out. And so, again, they're all historical references, and so, in my opinion, there should be no alternate or modifications. Even the Texas Attorney General spoke at length at the SBOE meeting where they said that the board, to the State Board of Education, that the U.S. Supreme Court precedent allows for the Bible and religion to be taught in a non-proselytizing way.
That was going to be my question. Is the, is the context of the ones that you're saying that you are providing an alternate, I'm trying to remember your actual, no, her actual words that she was using just a second ago about the content?
Yes.
That you're needing to offer them an alternative content, which I, which in some ways I would understand, but in this particular case, what I was wanting to know is, is the content proselytizing, or is it just historical reference? Because the Bible is a historical document.
So when we started looking at the lessons, we tiered them, and there are some lessons which we color-coded in purple that is a religious story. And those are the ones that we, if a parent did not want their child, they, you know, requested an exemption, then we would have to rewrite the whole, the whole lesson. We'd have to find a text, and we'd have to adapt the lesson to meet the needs of that text, right? But then there's others that it's just a religious, like it's referring to religion to give context to the history that is being taught. So religion's not being, it's not a historical, it's not a, excuse me, it's a historical story with some religious context, because it involves, I mean, religion, there are some religious history pieces there. And so it's giving students kind of some background, but it is not a religious text per se. It's a historical text that makes reference to the religion.
Which is why it shouldn't be amended.
Well, and that's what we're saying, for those, we don't see a need to really change the text. We might just make some tweaks to some of the questions in the read-alouds that are provided, but that, that was, that's all just where we're at the planning stage of that.
So I guess.
So we welcome your feedback on.
Well, for me, I would just go back to, is the story that you're, like, particular story or whatever that you're referring to, whatever the purple content?
Yeah, the purple.
Description is, and I'm not reciting it right here in front of me right now, but the purple content, is it, you're saying it's a story. Is it a story that's proselytizing, like trying to convert someone, or is it being used in a, in a context that is either a historical reference or teaching even like the Golden Rule or something in that regard?
Yes. Trustee Nelson is correct in that none of the religious texts there are trying to convert anybody to any type of religion. They're used in, to teach historical things that have occurred throughout the world. And so some of them are a religious story. Those are the ones that we, we color-coded in purple, that we thought, well, if a parent were to complain about this or wouldn't want their child to be a part of this lesson, then we would have to find a completely different text, because it is a story, a parable, something from a religious text like the Bible.
But it's Old and New Testament and not proselytizing.
No, it is not. You are correct.
My question was more regarding the implementation of it. When we adopted it, we adopted K-5, and I know that most school districts will have K-5 campuses, 6-8 campuses. We have a bit of a unique situation with 5th and 6th grade campuses. So I've heard that that's been a bit of a challenge for those campuses, because they don't just have the switch teachers that we have in kindergarten through 4th grade. They might have three teachers. It calls for 120 minutes, and the language arts classes have it designated 90 minutes. So I know that while we adopted it, K-5, I guess my question for all of us is, could we amend it to fit those unique campus situations, because I've heard they're cutting back on things like fine arts. Social studies is becoming a bit of a dilemma, so some of the technicalities, because it kind of operates in between elementary and junior high, versus a lot of districts have a K-5, a 6-8.
So I had, I had heard that also, and so I reached out to a few of the principals and campuses to ask that question, and because I heard it stated as it was a Bluebonnet issue, but it was really a state mandate of the changes on the minutes. It wasn't just because you're using Bluebonnet. And yes, it is causing some challenges, but I think.
What are you referring to, state mandate on the minutes?
Oh, I'm just referring to what I was told by the principals that I checked with on. They were saying that they made the changes of the 120 minutes. It's not just because it's Bluebonnet. Is that correct?
I just want to make sure. We're going to have to adjust it back and forth. The adjustment was due to the change in the curriculum, and so that is, that is why that the campuses are working through schedule changes because of the requirements due to the adoption of the new curriculum.
So they're losing minutes from other courses or from fine arts to. So they're losing minutes from other courses or from fine arts to accommodate for it? So if a fifth and sixth grade campus might have the fifth grade running on the curriculum and then sixth grade on something different? So that just sounds like a bit of a scheduling challenge when you just have two grades. Or if you have a K through sixth campus, just one grade running on this curriculum.
So it is more of a challenge for the campuses that have run three-man teams, as we call them, because they were built on 90 minutes. The campuses that have two or four-man teams, there's a little bit less of an adjustment. Our intermediate schools have always had a master scheduling challenge because of the way that we allocate them. It's just, it's a different little, a beast, that I would say, in the middle grades. But no matter what, fifth and sixth grade are gonna have different curriculum because sixth through eighth grade is a different set of teacs.
Well, yes, different curriculum, but I think they block the time equally so that they can share in fine arts and PE.
So it depends on their allocation. So we will have some campuses that no matter what curriculum we chose, they would have multiple teams on different schedules. So I just wanna make sure that that is clear. Some of that has nothing to do with this, but the 120-minute mandate is because of the adjustment in our curriculum. Some of the other adjustments are because they constantly are having to change their master schedule. If I have 15 teachers this year, I'm gonna run a different schedule than next year I have 16 teachers. So it's just kind of a.
So they'll spend longer in language arts unless in another subject?
So we've made sure, we've worked really hard in collaboration with our principals and our teaching and learning team and our student support services for interventions of making sure that no matter if you're on the four-man team, a two-man team, or a three-man team, your content time is the same because that's been something we've been working towards. It's been hard to get there, but we've worked really hard with them to make sure that for next year, it's, I always call it teacher lottery, but it also shouldn't be school lottery or class lottery or LC lottery that I get more time in math than you do because you happen to be on this team. So both sets of schedules listed in here have the same amount of content time. What we had to adjust was when the little extra things happen throughout the day, whether that's the, what we call wind time, depending Eagles time, whatever, depending on what the campus calls, that additional intervention block. And so we've adjusted a little bit there.
I have, I have one more question. So it says that twice a semester, district, and then it also says, coaches and principals will visit each classroom. So twice a semester, each of the classrooms doing Blue Bonnet. Can you define like who district is?
So I'll let you.
Yes, thank you. Obviously, there's a lot of campus, 52 campuses. And so our idea was to divide and conquer. So district leadership, meaning our assistant superintendents of schools, our directors of elementary education, myself, Dr. Upshaw, our ELA team specialists, district coaches. That's who we kind of clumped into that category of district leadership that will help to facilitate.
So you'll visit like every classroom twice a semester?
Not at every single campus. We're assigning ourselves schools. So like I may have five schools and my job is, yes, to visit every single one of those classrooms twice at those five campuses. Very doable.
Well, yeah, yeah, okay. My concern, I guess, is just the level of extra administration that would put on the teachers. Are they also, so it hasn't listed out, will they also have principals coming in regularly?
Our, our goal is to do those walks with the principal. So I apologize if I wasn't clear. It wouldn't just be like myself walking into those classrooms and observing the teachers by myself. I would hope to.
So that would all be one day?
That would be, yeah, and that would count as my time, my one time that semester for that teacher. And the principal also has a certain number that they have to complete. And that would, so we'd be like double dipping. So it would count one for me and one for the principal in that one walkthrough that we do.
Is that part of the training process for the implementation?
Yes.
Or is that like just because we're evaluating everyone?
No, so most of these walkthroughs are not evaluative in nature. Obviously, principals are still required to conduct their T-test evaluations. And there will be components of Blue Bonnet for our ELA teachers that will be a part of that. But the, the goal of this is for us to calibrate and to make sure that as we're walking in those classrooms, this is new for our principals as well. So that we're able to, you know, afterwards debrief and say, what did you see? This is what I saw and just be able to calibrate. So yes, a big part of that is a part of our professional development plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just would like to make a comment first. I just wanna thank you guys for all of your hard work on this OER transition plan. The committee, I know you guys have been working around the clock. It's very detailed. It's 22 pages long, a lot of questions. It sounds like you guys have thought through all of the questions that we have asked you. I agree that, you know, we have to have alternative lessons. I'm in agreement with what you guys have done with that. And just so you know, I did talk to TEA, the person that's been an expert on Blue Bonnet. He called your plan exemplary and that he's gonna be using it as an exemplar for other districts. I want you guys to know that. And I really trust, I mean, this is the man that really knows Blue Bonnet way more than any of us could. And he said that, so I want you to know that. And I'd like to motion to adopt this plan.
I second that.
Have we had enough discussion then that we can move to a vote?
I have one, one other thing to say. I actually spoke to him as well, and he was unfamiliar with the coding that was pulled out for the religious lessons. So he needed to look into that. And then again, I mean, if we're modifying curriculum, that is high-quality instructional material, then we're making ourselves open to litigation because we are not presenting the material that's high-quality instructional material and approved by the State Board of Education. So if we amend it or modify it in any way, shape, or form, we've now lost that high-quality instructional material. So I very strongly believe that we should adopt this curriculum with fidelity and no modifications to be in compliance with the law.
I have one question as well regarding that. If we adopt this today and say we find out, I'm just hypothetically speaking here, and we find out that we are, that, that component of what we're looking at could possibly present a problem, are we able to amend this?
We can amend it if we send it to the State Board of Approval, a State Board of Education for approval.
I just want to reiterate, we are not recommending modifying this curriculum in any way. We are just responding to if we were to get a parent request that we are required to respond to them, this would be a helpful guide for us to know what, when, and where we could possibly see a question. So I just wanna make sure that that is clear. We have no plans of adjusting it. This was, this is in response to what we see. This happens regularly for us that we get questions. So I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I spoke to Dr. Upshaw today and she told me that they were intending to smooth the language or rewrites the specific colors to present for parents that want a religious exemption, which as, as we've noted before, that this isn't religion because it's not proselytizing. It's Old Testament and New Testament and fully within the law.
And typically, when our parents have those concerns, those are conversa, sorry. Those are conversations that we have with them. You know, we obviously try to talk to our parents and inform them before they make a final decision on any kind of exemption. So those are our talking points.
The great thing about the curriculum is the parent handbook that each unit comes with a letter of what's coming to, for the parents to be aware of what's coming.
And also the fact that it is available for them to see and to review. So they have access to that, which I think is very empowering.
All right, so are we ready to vote? All right, so all those in favor of adopting it, knowing we can make amendments to it later, please show by the uplift of hands. Okay, that's three. All those opposed? Two, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Wait, did we approve the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Oh. I thought we did seven, I mean, we did it all, it was unanimous. Oh my gosh. Okay. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Five, Administration Presenting the Names Submitted for Naming New Conroe ISD Campuses and Facilities.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. I am here tonight to share with you the names submitted through the Conroe ISD website over the last month. As you recall, we have a lot of things up for consideration for naming. And the community responded and submitted some wonderful selections for your consideration. A quick review of the timeline. I was here in April to initiate the process. We collected names through this past Friday, and I am here tonight to share the names with you. The, you all should have received a spreadsheet. Tomorrow, we'll be posting the spreadsheet online for the community to view. Oftentimes, they want to see the names and the justification. So that will be there along with this presentation as, the words are small and I'll probably move pretty quickly through this presentation. So the first campus, Candy Creek 9th Grade, we received 59 submissions. And there's an overview of, of the submissions there. You can have, you know, you can have a moment going through these names. The Grand Oaks Feeder 9th Grade Campus, we received 209 submissions with a variety of, you know, categories. Flex 27, which is a new elementary school in the Grand Oaks Feeder, 67 submissions. You'll notice that a lot of the names repeat. People are very passionate about their name. Flex 26 Intermediate, serving Conroe and Timber Mill Feeders potentially. Zoning is still ongoing. 106 submissions. The Grand Oaks Feeder Junior High School. Just a reminder, this is the 78,9 campus, so it's a dual facility. We're kind of morphing into calling it, it's served purpose as a junior high on this side of it. 344 submissions for the Grand Oaks Feeder Junior High. The new junior high serving the Conroe and Timber Mill Feeders potentially. Looking at you, Mr. McCord. 85 submissions. For the virtual school, we received 24 submissions. And last but not least, for our three ag facilities, I've categorized them across here. And we have 107, seven and three submissions, but definitely no lack of passion for any of the names. Just a reminder, the naming process is guided by Board Policy CW Local. And we have completed our third task in this process, which is sharing the names with you. So in June, you will have items, board items for each of them in which you can discuss and potentially name any of the facilities with either a suggestion from the community or a name of your own choosing. Thank you.
I do have a question, and thank you for those because it is, it must be quite interesting reading through them all as they, you're trying to sort through them. But do, are we going to be naming all of those facilities, all, just the schools? Or like, can we pick some of them to name now and some of them to wait on?
Absolutely. Obviously, the schools that'll be opening in 2026 and 2027 likely need a name for branding and construction purposes. But should you choose to wait on like the ag facilities or things like that? It's absolutely at the board's discretion.
2026, 2027, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So pretty much all the schools need a name?
I just was reading that.
You can hold off on the ag facilities if you want, but the schools are gonna need a name.
Schools need names and need identities. All right, were there any other questions, ladies? I'm sorry, you're welcome.
Can I just ask, I'm just brainstorming. When there's 100 names listed, do you have any recommendations on how we narrow those down? As a board, that could be a long meeting.
You know, that is one of the joys of being a board member.
Okay, I'm just saying, guys, talk about long meetings. You have 344 submissions.
It's not uncommon for, let's say, you know, if you, if you read through it and let's say you have three or four that you're interested in for you to call and Sarah can do some research. There's some of these folks that have been past employees from a long time ago. We need to research and we might get a little more information, be able to share with you when and where they worked and that type of thing. What's been commonplace historically is when it, and you all have more to name. We've never had this many names because we've never opened five schools in a year. So this is, you have more to name than we've ever had. But the, the common way that it's happened is when you come to the June meeting, you know, if you have three or, three or four that you're highly interested in, is to let everybody share. Like, you know, I think this person, and let me tell you why, and each person sort of shares their three or four. If you have that, share out, like, and then see if you get some common themes. And some of them might go fairly easy, right? Like the ninth grade campuses might be easy click-offs. And then you may hear a common theme of two or three names that would be pretty simple to get you to a couple. And then, you know, maybe you're down to one or two that are, would be difficult and maybe take a little longer. But that, that has worked well in the past. We used to not do that. The reason I say that is because historically, we didn't do that. And it was just kind of a race to who would make the first motion. And everybody didn't get a chance to share out their, what they thought about. So that, I think last time we did it, we actually did a board item that said discussion of names as its own separate board item first and then had a board item to name.
For each naming.
Yeah, each campus so that you all feel like you can say what you wanna say.
Thank you very much. We're on to the, consider and approve the Conroe ISD Wellness Plan with Dr. Merle.
President Odenweller, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Knoll. I'm proud to be before you tonight to represent the School Health Advisory Council, or SHAC. The SHAC utilized the goals and CIST policy FFA Local and worked collaboratively with parents, key stakeholders, district representatives, and the triennial assessment from the spring of 2024 to develop a comprehensive Conroe ISD Wellness Plan to lead us for the next three years. At this time, the SHAC recommends and requests your approval for the Conroe ISD Wellness Plan.
Is there any discussion? All right, do I have a motion to accept the Conroe ISD Wellness Plan as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting of this motion, please show by the uplift of hands. Six, zero, and the motion carries. All right, that was easy, wasn't it? Actually, we're about to have another fairly easy one. Agenda Item 5C, Receive Attendance Boundary for Timber Mill High School, New Conroe Area Junior High, and New Conroe Area Intermediate. Mr. McCord?
President Odenweller, members of the board. Dr. Knoll, I come to you tonight on behalf of our District Attendance Boundary Committee to give you an information-only brief update on the process of zoning for the Timber Mill High School, the new junior high, and the new intermediate that you'll be naming in the coming weeks. So the first thing I would say is I'd wanna commend our committee. They've exceeded all reasonable expectations in coming up with some great scenarios. I'll show them to you in the coming slides. Our objectives are the obvious ones, to create the initial attendance boundaries for those three schools. But I would also make a big point that the committee has worked with fidelity to try to do this while keeping elementary school cohorts together all the way through kindergarten through 12th grade to the best of our ability. And we may allude to that in the coming slides. Just an update on where we are tonight. If you look here, obviously, this is May 13th, this is where we are. If you're amenable, our goal is to bring to you one scenario recommendation on July 15th in the heat of the summer that is something you can be proud of, that's good for students, and good for parents, and good for families for each campus. And we would aim for July 15th. In the top right, you see where we are, working through the process as a committee. If you look in the lower right, the next big things on the horizon for our group are the June 10th and June 12th, which are meetings for the community, which will be our third and fourth. which are meetings for the community, which will be our third and fourth community meetings. So we're looking forward to those and those are just around the corner. I'm not trying to get clicks, I promise. But I would tell you whether you are a school board member, you're watching on YouTube or you're here as part of our studio audience, that the best place to go to get information on this is our zoning website. It has all 13 scenarios that have been vetted. It has the six scenarios that are currently live by our committee, frequently asked questions and a wealth of information, all there to you free of charge at our zoning's website accessible from the district website. So just to start, the first one we're going to look at, at the high school level, we have two, is proposed scenario 2.0. If you look on the left, you see our current situation. On the north and east of our district, you'll see in that yellow, or maybe if you use a little imagination Vegas gold, the Conroe High feeder on the left, and the reddish color on the right that represents Candy Creek. That is our current situation. On the right, you see proposed committee generated scenario 2.0 and you see Timber Mill represented in gray. In this scenario, Timber Mill would basically occupy the upper right northeast quadrant of our, of our district. And you can see it would basically stretch from midtown, Conroe and the range on the north side, all the way down 105 to the east, you get to Cleveland. So I want to compare and contrast 2.0 and 2.1 because they're very similar. And if you look at the top right, on the right side, you will see the area at the very top right that in this particular slide under 2.1 is represented in pink. This is the area north of 105. This road that you see here is old highway 105. We call this planning zone 23 and this planning zone 24A. And 2 point, and if you, if you look here and you go to 2.0, those two planning zones would go to Timber Mill. If you look in 2.1, those two planning zones would go where they go right now, which is to Candy Creek High School. It is worth noting and important to get, to be aware of. It's actually about 12 to 13 minutes faster to travel from right here at the far northeast section of our district and go to Grangerland where Candy Creek and Morehead are than to travel down 105 to get to Stockton and Timber Mill. It's also worthy of note that right now, the way you get there, and I've represented this by a very light gray indicated road. This is Dahl Collins Road. We've used Dahl Collins Road for decades. It comes here to the south and intersects with 2090 to take you to Grangerland. So this is 2.0, 2.1, this is 2.0. Those are the two ones currently being vetted by our committee at the high school level right now. And once again, you can see those at our website. And what you get is, are numbers that for the next few foreseeable years, potentially, depending upon what you adopt as the Board of Trustees, put us in a pretty good place for numbers and capacity. It's something really to be excited about. At Conroe High, at the 9th grade campus, at Candy Creek High, at the Candy Creek 9th grade campus, and at Timber Mill. So we are, we are excited about that. We know they're going to grow rapidly, but it's, puts us in a good spot. So that's the high school.
May I ask a question about the two pink, go back to your, I say pink because they look pink to me. I'm sorry, the Candy Creek area that you've got in the top right, yes, that area. You were expressing that it was quicker to get down there by keeping those closer to the Candy Creek feeder. Are they going to be able to keep those kids together through the whole feeders growth wise?
That is the plan. And I'm, those will be shown in the subsequent slides.
Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
But you know, you also cued me to remember something.
You took a breath, I thought you were dying.
That's right, I know, I try not to breathe. But what's really important, what's really important on 2.1 is that 2.1 was developed by a community member and sent in via our website portal, which you can find at www conroeisd.net. So, so that was developed by a community member. So right now, we're still vetting both 2.0 and 2.1. It's to be determined. We have meetings to come, but those are the differences. The numbers are great, which then brings you, and I believe to follow up on your question, President Odenweller. You see, we have two scenarios in play for the junior highs. And if you look at the junior highs and you look going left to right, west to east on your FM dial, what you're going to have is you're going to have Pete in yellow, you're going to have Stockton in blue, and then in pink, you're going to have Morehead. When you look on the right, you'll see the new to be named junior high in the lower right, just on the southeast loop. And you can see it denoted by a star right there on FM 1314. So if you look here, the big difference between B.1 and C.1 are two current finalists. If you look right here and you have to look closely, if you look right here in this area denoted by what, two sources close to me, both math teachers tell me is a scaline triangle where 75, 45 Maine and Pacific all come together. If you look here at B.1 and you look closely in C.1, basically the area inside that scaline triangle in version B.1, they would go to Pete Junior High. If you go fast forward to C.1, they would go to the new junior high. Now, what's important to note, those students are actually Armstrong students. C.1 keeps all the Armstrong Elementary students together all the way through. So those are the two ones that we're currently looking at. And to follow up on your excellent question, if you look right here, in both those scenarios, if it's going to work for me, in both those scenarios, this area here, 23 and 24A, highway 105 extended to the east and also old highway 105, they would both go to Morehead Junior High. So they would stay consistent with their peers. Which then brings us to numbers that look really good for just the next few, few years with all four junior highs in the neighborhood of 1,000 students. So still large schools, but good for kids, good for teachers, good for nice parents in the pickup line and just everything that goes with performing, being a junior high school. So that's one reason we were so excited to be here tonight. So the next one would be the intermediate school to be named. So just going left to right to do due diligence to all the schools represented, also west to east. You can see Stewart in green, Gordon Reed in orange. You can see Cryer in yellow, Travis in pink. You can see Bosman in blue. You can see Veterans Memorial in green. You can see Grangerland, and I don't know what color that is. I would call it maybe peach. And then Campbell down there in that pinkish color in the far south. The biggest issue we have right now and the need for an intermediate school is necessitated by the fact that Bosman is over capacity. So if you look at the current situation we have at Bosman, when you have a situation where you have a campus with a wide vertical geographical swath and then a multitude or myriad of high-growth communities within that wide geographical swath, that's a recipe to be over capacity, which is exactly what we are at Bosman Intermediate. So when you look forward and you go here and you look at B., version B., lowercase b, that's how we keep them separated. You see the new intermediate school would be represented in gray. And the differentiating factors here, if you look on the southeast loop, there's the new school. For those of you that like go-karts, there's a go-kart track right here. But this area right in here is known as Barton Creek Trail. In scenario B., Barton Creek Trail stays at Bosman. In scenario B.1., Barton Creek Trail would go to the new, to the new intermediate school. Other than that, they are very similar and they give you numbers at the end. They look really good for the next few foreseeable years. We would potentially, depending upon what you adopt, be in a pretty good place in the north and the east at the intermediate school level for the next few years. And it would be really something to be excited about. We have some schools we'll have to address sooner or later at the elementary level. But this is exciting, it's been exciting for the committee. And they've done a great job and that's what I have for you. And I'm here if you have any questions, thoughts, or anything I can do.
Questions? That was pretty easy.
Thank you, Mr. McCord.
Thank you, Mr. McCord and team.
Be here all night, thank you.
All right, item 5D, receive update regarding the 2024-25 district improvement plan.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. We're here this evening with some more updates for our district improvement plan. Big shout out to our school improvement department, human resources and operations. So we're going to kind of jump around into some different topics. And then I'm going to share the plan for the coming year as far as where are we in development? And then what does it look like as far as presenting this? So maybe I'm not bouncing around to different departments next year. So the first one we're going to look at is Goal 5, Performance Objective 6. This is really tied to requirement for our improvement plan for Grangerland. And so really working on that intervention time. And you can see what the goal was to move from low 30s to mid to 60s. And at QA 3, they were inching closer. So that has been completed. So now it's in the cloud, getting scored and graded. And hopefully we'll get results on how they did. They worked really hard, we're really proud of that team this year. Looking at all of our HR goals, I know we just had a lot of discussion over, at, around HR at our last audit committee. But these goals look on retaining, retention, growing every, our teachers, our administrators. So this first one looks at job fair, year-long residence, really working on emergency permits. You can see that we have 20 that are now certified. We're up to 28 out of 100 DOIs that are now certified. And that number continues to grow as they complete their assessments and, and get those on their certificates. We also had very successful job fair. A lot, I saw a lot of you guys out, thanks for joining us, it's a big day. This one is a requirement for our peace officers. So as of December, we had hired six more, two more were in progress. And that is something that is continuously working on. Chief does a great job and is always hard at work to making sure we're adding high-quality officers. Recruiting.
Sorry, is that part of the state mandate?
Yes.
Okay, so where are we at on that? So we've hired, how many did you say? How many more?
This, at this update, we were at six more, we had two more in the queue. We're in like, single digits, a very small number and constantly adding to. We are, yes, we are gaining.
What is the goal, how many do we need or?
I do not have that answer, I can get it to you. Oh, there he is. Like usually he's over there, did you see me? Like I kept saying like, um.
Yeah.
Sure. We need just a very small handful of officers to have one all day, every day at every campus. I don't, probably something we would want to discuss in private about where they might be assigned. But we are 24 officers more than we were when House Bill 3 passed. So we're very close to our goal.
Awesome. So back to HR. So looking at our, our novice teachers at zero to one, how are we working to keep them? One of the biggest pieces, as you know, is our TIA program. So the third payout, we're going to be adding 384 designated teachers this summer, so it's exciting. And then we continue to evaluate and look at what do we need to address their most pressing needs? We do that through, through surveys at campus level and at district level, always looking at ways to improve there. And then our professional learning plan is something that we bring forward every year. So we look at the novice teacher academy, what do they have, what do they need offered? Have they completed it? How are we moving through that? So that survey comes out in May. And then the strategy two is looking at any performance concerns, making sure the administrators are trained to handle that, making sure they give them that high-quality feedback so that they're constantly improving. Strategy three is looking at our peer professionals and supporting them and getting that TEA educator aid certification. We have 13 additional peer professionals for a total of 88 that have met their requirement through the assessment. And then hosting the alternative ACP nights. We've had additional eight parades, one bus driver and 14 substitutes that have moved into the teacher pipeline for 60 new teachers from in-house. So I think that's a pretty great, wanted to take some time to, to highlight that. Looking at school leadership, we have Performance Objective 3. This looks for that identifying those future leaders, having our principals help us with that. We spend a lot of time engaging in our aspiring assistant principals and our aspiring principals academy. We had 25 selected for the principal cohort this past year and 50 for our aspiring assistant principals. And when you're going to name five schools, we need all of them, right? And then some. So continuing to go to that program, this is led through our school improvement leadership department, but supported by literally everyone. Principals come and help present. And then all of our leaders, district leadership team spends time with them. It's, it's really an uplifting group. And then this last one looks at our strategy for that CIST lead. This strand looks at growing our teacher leaders. So not everybody wants to be an administrator. We need leaders at the teacher level, we need counselors, we need diag. So we've continued to grow that model so that, and we had 135 participants. Safe and collaborative school cultures, this is our operations section. So the first one is looking at the, the training that is required through the Texas School Safety Center for our threat assessment teams. Then we also have our multi-hazard emergency response. And we work through our MEOP and our safety committee on that. And then this kind of gets us into talking about next year already. We worked with you guys to come up and you adopted new goals. So for, in the March and April district level planning decision-making committee, we received feedback on goals 2 through 6. The departments then took those, that feedback, really took a deep dive into that needs assessment with that feedback, went through the root cause analysis process and then came up with their prioritized problem statements and then the corresponding performance objectives. The district leadership team reviewed those. And then that is what I emailed to you guys, not to, some point maybe it was this week. I know you don't have anything to read, you've not received any emails that you are. But we're looking for, for feedback there. And then what will happen in June and July is the department will develop the strategies connected with those. We pushed Goal 1 to get feedback from district level because we're waiting for that, all the assessment, all the things that the state sends us that we're waiting on at the end of this month into early June. So then we'll get feedback from district level at the July meeting and then use August to really revise, submit that back to district leadership team. And our goal is to bring the district improvement plan to you for a final approval in September. So then, once we have approval, this is the preliminary kind of idea of what the schedule could look like for giving you the updates throughout the departments. And although I love standing up here and representing the amazing people, I think that it would be really beneficial to hear from the people who do all the things. They will be much better at answering the questions that you ask, just like Chief did, right? So the idea is since they're a little more streamlined, the school leadership team will present the STAR preliminary results to you in August. Then we'll request that approval for the whole dip. We're going, we're going for under 100 pages this year. And I believe in the team that we can do it. So we'll get that approval in September and then start going, working through the goals. October, take a pause in February for our annual report, because you know, that's a big item. And then March, go back to Goal 1. We wanted to give some time for the, the kids to come in and teachers to get to know them and learning to happen and monitoring so that we can give you kind of a true picture. So we felt like March would be after that middle of the year kind of assessment. By the time we process the results, we can share them with you in February, but then present them at the March meeting. And then April, why would we not want to end with Mr. McCord? Because then no one else has to compete with the jokes in any other month. And then in May, come back to you with the process just to see what you thought in year two and make any adjustments and get any feedback. So.
Can I just say, as a somewhat methodical person, that this like calms me? I, I love seeing this, so thank you for working on that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion?
Oh, I just wanted to say, sorry, I lost my voice, it's on trouble. The job fair was so great. I loved how we could see all of our school spirit. Every school had its own unique character. And I thought it was such a great way to get people to want to come here. So I just wanted to tell everybody a great job with that.
I don't think it's a secret, but secretly, the employees love it as much as the people who are hoping to get a job. It's like one of our absolute favorite days. Everyone's excited, everyone's just alike, there's just so much energy. So we do enjoy it as much as them, so thank you for noticing.
And Dr. Knoll will live in my head in infamy playing the, the drum on that one too.
Dream big. Any other feedback on the process or the plan for sharing next year? Sound okay? Thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bedford. All right, moving on to planning and construction.
I'm sorry, real quick, did we get that presentation electronically? If not, could we send it again or, sorry?
I think it just came.
Oh, did it? Okay.
Earlier today.
You did send it, okay. Okay, sorry. Oh, okay.
Okay, moving on to planning and construction, Mr. Foster. Consider and approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the East County Transportation Center addition project.
It's good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration and approval a guaranteed maximum price amendment for our East County Transportation, Transportation Center, which we now refer to as the Candy Creek Transportation Center. So back in September of 2024, you, our Board of Trustees, selected Brookstone to be our construction manager at risk for this particular project. We partnered Brookstone up with PBK and our transportation department and several other district departments worked together to develop the scope of work. We advertised a set of plans for public bids. We received those bids and have negotiated a guarantee maximum price of $9,930,326, which we're asking for your approval for tonight. This is a 2023 bond referendum project and it does measure well against our overall project budget of $10,900,000. Now we're requesting your approval to guarantee maximum price.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Can you just list some of the projects, like what you're focusing on with this renovation?
Indeed. So in the 2019 bond referendum, we had a, a transportation center project which established our current location of the Candy Creek Transportation Center. So that was a master plan. So we knew it wasn't big enough for the eventual growth in, in the Candy Creek feeder. So this is phase number two. So it finishes the building that we'd master planned. So additional shops, additional office space that will outfit the, the Candy Creek Transportation Team, as well as additional bus parking area, paved area for their employees and the buses that will accommodate the growth that we foresee over the next few years. And essentially, and for the East County site, that is that, and there's also right along with this is some pavement repairs at the Conroe Center and all the safety and security upgrades that were mentioned in the audit committee for the, for both sites. So we've been able to accommodate those in this project as well.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor show by the uplift of hands. Six, zero. The motion carries six, zero. All right. Onto your next one, Mr. Foster, which is consider and approve the guaranteed maximum price amendment for Vogel, Wilkerson and Veterans Memorial renovations.
Yes, ma'am. This is a critical infrastructure project resulting from our 23 bond referendum for the campuses of Vogel, Wilkerson and Veterans Memorial. HKS is our design team. You, our board, selected Baird Williams Construction to be our construction manager at risk back in September of 2024. Together, HKS, our departments here at Conroe ISD and Baird Williams developed the scope of work, advertised for public bids, received those bids and we've negotiated a guaranteed maximum price of $13,644,561 for the scope of work, which does measure up well against our overall planned budget of $14,607,352 for this work. And so we're requesting your approval of the GMP.
Discussion? Okay, I have one question.
Sure.
Veterans is pretty new.
Veterans was built in 2001 as Granger Land Intermediate, when it originally opened.
Okay, got it. I was thinking the, that that area was just renovated recently. So there you go. That's what had me confused. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Everyone, do I have a motion for, to accept as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor show by the uplift of hands. Motion carries six, zero. Item 8C, consider and approve the guaranteed maximum price amendment for the Mitchell, Cox and Travis intermediate renovations.
Yes, ma'am. So this is another critical infrastructure project resulting from the 2023 bond referendum. And back in September of 2024, you, our board of trustees, selected Teal Construction as our construction manager at risk for this project. Our design team is HKS again, and together that team, along with Conroe Departments, developed the scope of work. We advertised the plans for public bids, received the bids and negotiated a guaranteed maximum price of this work of $15,370,14, which does measure well against our budget of $17,540,110. This time we're requesting your approval of the GMP.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? All right. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
All in favor show by the uplift of hands. Six, zero. The motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. And now we're on to receive financial reports from Ms. Garza.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to present our financial update for month ended April 30th of 2025. First statement is our balance sheet. The balance sheet shows the district's assets, liabilities and fund balance. Presented here is the general fund, debt service, child nutrition and self-funded insurance. Our next statement is the income statement. This shows the district's revenues and expenditures for the same four funds. Total revenue in the general fund, $552.9 million year-to-date. Total expenditures, $388.6. Our 2023 bond referendum update as of April 30th, total funds expended and encumbered to date, $847.7 million, leaving just over 1.1 billion estimated to complete. Our self-funded insurance, tough month of April, the plan ran a deficit of 1.7 million for the month. One thing that was unique about the month of April, our claims do settle on Tuesdays. And because of the way the calendar fell, we actually settled five weeks of claims during this month. So it particularly looks worse. As a result of that, we are at 6.8 million deficit for the year. Just as a reminder, we have a $7.8 million fund balance. So we are coming into some very heavy utilized months in the plan over the summer. So we may be requesting additional transfer of fund balance in the general fund just to get us to shore up the plan for this year in addition to the three and a half million that we are requesting for next year that was approved as part of the employee benefits and plan design changes for next year. So we will continue to monitor this as the fiscal year closes out and we will bring you a transfer probably after the close of the fiscal year, once we know how everything settles and what the accrual looks like to shore up the plan for the current year. And then we'll move into next year and make our determination moving into next year, what we want to do going forward. Our investment says of April 30th, par value at 1.4 billion. You can see we're outperforming in all categories that the benchmark, the 90-day T-bill, our combined portfolio is at 4.47 compared to that benchmark of 4.19. And that is our update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We are through a major portion now. That's good. We are moving into closed session. The board will go into closed session pursuant to section 551.129, which allows a governmental body to consult with its attorney in a closed meeting by telephone, conference call, video conference call or communications over the internet. Section 551.071, which allows the private consultation with the board's attorney on any and all subjects or matters authorized by law. And 551.074, which allows for the discussion of the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee, including but not limited to a discussion regarding a recommendation to propose termination for good cause of term contract employee and to evaluate the candidate for the position of interim superintendent. The time is 9:10. Any action, vote or decision of the board with regard to any matters discussed in closed session will be made when the board returns to open session. The time is 10:16. The board is back in session, open session. The next item on the agenda is item 10A, proposed termination for good cause and authorized notice proposing termination of term employment contract of Brian Schultz. Is there any discussion? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd like to move that the board of trustees approve the recommendation of the superintendent to terminate for good cause the term employment contract of Brian Schultz and authorize the superintendent to notify Mr. Schultz of this action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor show by the uplift of hands. The vote carries six, zero. Moving on to item, item 10B, consider and adopt policies and revisions as placed forward. These are, each policy will be addressed individually. And trustee Dawson, would you please walk us through an overview of how we got to this point in the policy adoption process?
Yes. So guys, just bear with me. And there's, there's a lot here, so I'm gonna try to break it down. If we could start with BF, Board Policies Local. And I believe Ms. Godfrey, you printed off copies for everyone to look at. So you should have the original amendments from the last board policy, or I'm sorry, from the last board meeting. And then there were three different edits that we received from different trustees from the last month. So, so let me just go through what the original amendments were and what some of the edits that we received were. So in the organization paragraph, our board council recommends cutting the organization paragraph as the wording now is a bit misleading. Legal policies are not solely based on the law, but on Tasby's interpretation of the law. Existing language says these policies are legally binding until repealed, revised, et cetera, but this is not true. If the state law changes, this board is bound to what is in legal. It's not bound to what is legal. It supersedes it. Also says local policy must be read together with legal.
I'm sorry, trustee Dawson, I'm not totally understanding that. When you say we're not bound to legal, do you mean we're not bound to our legal policy? Or do you mean we're not bound to state, to the legal statute?
To, to the legal policy and our policies.
But didn't TEE say that everything that they wrote is based on statute?
No, we're talking about the legal section, not the local.
The legal tab. But isn't the legal section based on statute?
It's based on Tasby's interpretation of the law.
Okay. So we're saying here that we're keeping our current legal, but we are not bound by the legal because the board supersedes that. Is that what you're saying?
We're saying this, this language is a bit misleading because it's saying we're bound to what is in legal, but technically we are not. If a state law changes, we are bound to state law, not to the legal tab. Does that, am I answering your question?
Sort of. It's just when I went through the legal, I saw where it was all cited and so I was able to go look it up and it was the statute. So that's why I'm a little bit confused about why we're saying we're not bound to that because it is the statute. It's representative of the statute. It's just condensed.
Well, one of the things that I would point out is that in Tasby's legal tab, that is where they, our policies are currently hosted at the moment, they combine all of their legal, whether it's Texas, federal, whatever. They synthesize it into a single document as their interpretation of the law in that regards. And that is why that compilation is misleading as to what, what we're to be following. And without these clauses, the wall, the law will continue to be upheld by CISD. There's nothing, by removing this statement, this organization statement, we are still upheld, holding law in CISD.
Then, I mean, if we're, I don't really understand why. First of all, I think when I read through it, it was based on the legal statute and what I read from TEE was not. It wasn't cited. I don't know if that's because it's supposed to be the local policy. That was unclear to me. But I had to go back to our Tasby policies to look up what the laws were because it wasn't cited in TEE and I don't know them off the top of my head. So that's why I'm questioning whether, what we're bound to and what we're not bound to and where our legal is gonna be. Are we bringing in a TEE legal now? We're saying we're not bound to that or are we not bound to the Tasby legal? What are we bound to and what are we not bound to?
If we, if we display the hosting for underties services for legal, it is strictly the legal. It is, it is the actual statutes there. There's no interpretations. There's no, it's cited law there. They don't do anything with it but post it all and host it all there. So they're not making any interpretation.
Didn't have an example of that for our district, but I did for the other districts and it looks to be just the exact same legal Tasby has posted. So I'm, I'm just really confused about what we're doing. And I also, since you brought that up, I noticed that the policy committee signed an agreement for Policy Connect and Policy Services with TEE and was told that we're going to have a link to the TE policy connect instead of what we have now. So that adds even more confusing, confusion because I don't know when I'm looking at this policy, am I looking at it with our current legal, with a legal policy that I haven't seen yet that's just gonna pop up on the website? Our board hasn't discussed that at all. That was just the policy committee.
So in response to the question about the policy, the going live with Policy Connect or Policy Hosting Site for, with TE's services, the reason that hasn't gone forward is because I've had many, many trustees, I haven't even brought it to you all yet because I have many trustees that have come to us overwhelmed with the amount of work that they're being presented with and the amount of things to be considered and read through. And so for that reason, I chose not to bring that forward to anyone yet at this point and, and release a link for more studies. We will have time to do that, but right now we haven't even been able to get one policy passed since we've been starting to work on this and nothing that. Excuse me. I didn't interrupt you. I waited till you were done. So in, in addition to that, the removal of this clause makes no difference one way or the other to us following state law or federal law. We would still be mandated by law to follow, CISD would be overruled as far as what we need to do based on law. So even if we had something that became outlawed by statute, it would be, we would be updated legally by that.
I'd like to move on to some of the other edits that were suggested in this policy.
So if you could just give me one more second, I just, I want to make a point that Policy Connect and Policy Services were voted on by the policy committee, the group of three, and they were not brought to the board. Whether that was to stay work or not, I don't think it's appropriate for the policy committee to make such public face.
Okay, you've jumped to a different.
About talking to the board. And it makes it very confusing when we're trying to look at policy and we don't know what it's going to go with.
The board voted to have President Odenweller execute contracts.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's not go there yet. That's item legal, item 10D. We will get to that issue at that time. So let's just stick with the item that we are on right now, BF. And your, your comments have been noted. Do you have anything else to lay out?
So moving on to policy development, the original revision states that policies and amendments may be initiated by the superintendent, the board, employees or community citizens. And then we struck the last phrase there. And the intent, believe, I'm not sure which trustee sent this, but the intent behind one trustee's edits that the superintendent shall collaborate to establish revised policies, that, that's covered in the first sentence and the first half of that sentence. But ultimately, this proposed revision is inconsistent with Texas Education Code 11.1512, which states it ultimately is the board's role to create policies, not the superintendent. So that's why policy development, that's why that's there.
I'm sorry, trustee Dawson, what, which, are you on BF still? There's so many policies here.
Yes, policy development. It is on the first page.
Okay.
And then if you move on to the second page, adoption and amendment, it was suggested to cut an emergency adoption clause, but this language has been there for years and it is needed in case of emergencies. Like for example, if there's a natural disaster, we may need to adopt policy quickly for unforeseen events. So our board council recommended that we keep that clause in there. And then lastly, the Tasby localized updates. We struck that. Um, we struck that last paragraph about Tasby localized updates, and like you said, trustee similar. Uh, we will be discontinuing Tasby Policy Services and have entered into a contract with TE Policy Services. Uh, they will be hosting our policies online and have done all of the work already to migrate those policies. There is no heavy lift for the district, um, and it's going to save us money doing so. Uh, I just wanna be clear, this does not mean we're leaving Tasby in general. This is just for Policy Services. So with that, I would move that we adopt BF as originally revised from the last meeting.
Do I have a second?
Do, so. So I placed an edit on that. Can I not share my edit?
Sure, go right ahead.
On the edit? Um, so.
Oh.
Sorry, I didn't know procedurally what I needed to do right now.
Hold on one second. Do I have a second to the motion? Okay, so go ahead, Trustee May. Yes.
Um, so I placed an edit and, um, I'm not sure what my edit was titled, so I'm not sure how for everybody to find what I did. Um, let's see. So in, in my edit, I added back in the verbiage at the top. Um, I reworded it because I, I assumed that it was being pulled off because of the Tasby issue. But my concern with removing it was, I thought about the campus principal that was looking at policy, or even a teacher that was looking at policy, and if they didn't have these guardrails on it to understand that legal referenced policies falls outside the scope of the law, I just, I felt like it was all very important, so, um, so I placed it back in there, um, just reworded it ever so slightly. Policy development, um, so I handed out to you guys, um, a copy of, um, two sections of the code that I'd like to go through. Um, so the part that was struck said, "But generally shall be recommended for the board's consideration by the Superintendent." So if you look at the first page, um, section eleven point two oh one for Superintendent, and then I highlighted D, "The duties of the Superintendent includes," and then flip the page number seven, "preparing recommendations for policies to be adopted by the Board of Trustees and overseeing the implementation." But preparing recommendations, so, um, it is in the statute that, that the Superintendent prepares recommendations for policies.
May I comment on that one?
I'm sorry?
May I comment on that one, or do you want me to wait until you, you all the way through?
If I could get through, it would be great.
Sure, sure, that's, that's perfectly fine.
And then if you flip over two pages, um, to section eleven point one five one two, collaboration between board and Superintendent. Um, and then number four, uh, let's see, sorry, B, "The Board of Trustees and the Superintendent shall work together to," and then go down to number four, "establish district-wide policies." It is very clear to me that the statute mandates us to collaborate between board and Superintendent, that we shall work together to establish district-wide policies. Um, so I think that's very important. It is concerning to me that the first round of these policies went out without any collaboration with the Superintendent, and I don't want that to, I, I feel like that falls outside of, um, the statute. And then if you go to the bottom, or I'm sorry, go to official policy manual, I, I added in a sentence, um, in the bottom of that paragraph that says, "If discrepancies occur between different copies of the manual, the version contained in the official policy manual shall be regarded authoritative." I just felt like this was housekeeping, and it was good. In case you get into a situation like this, this is where people that, you know, are, are pulling these policies up, they know exactly what they need to do. It's clear cut. Um, and then at the bottom, the paragraph that was struck, um, I left that first paragraph out because I felt like it basically was in the official policy manual. And that's my layout of the edits.
Trustee May, do you have a copy of your sugge- suggested edits?
I think it's in there. It's in the stack.
It is in the stack.
It's hard to follow.
Is it?
I apologize.
Is it this one?
It's okay.
Yes, that is that. So find the stack with, with this in it.
Trustee May, while she's pulling that, um, if I could just refer to the organization paragraph that we just passed, uh, moved to, uh, that you just mentioned. Um, this language was removed by our own Board Council, um, because, whom we specifically asked to review our policy changes to make sure they were legally sound. And the reason is because there's misleading and synthesized material in it, and the clauses, um, don't really help us one way or the other in making sure we're adhering to law. But more importantly, I'd like to go over to the policy development spot, um, where you referenced those in this, this piece right here. I, I'm not disagreeing with you because it states in the very first line, "Policies and policy amendments may be initiated by the Superintendent, board members, school personnel, or community citizens." That's pretty much allowing anyone to initiate, bring forward. And the people elected us to represent them, and with that comes the highest authority and responsibility to write and amend policy. And the current version of the policy uses the term "may," appropriately allowing the Superintendent, school personnel, or even community members to the ability to initiate policy. It, it doesn't say they shall be the only ones. The original now stuck, struck clause used "shall," which implies we should only consider policies recommended by the Superintendent. That's a significant shift. And it's also ma- it's saying "may" in one point and then saying "shall," and that's in our current policy right now. That wasn't even a "recommended." Um, number two on that is, "While it's important to value input from all stakeholders, including the Superintendent by far, retaining the word 'shall' language would suggest we cannot act independently, even when we believe it's in the best interest of those we serve. And we were elected not to wait for permission." That's why I believe this change should remain removed.
Again, my concern is that these policies went out initially and the Policy Committee moved directly past the Superintendent and did not ask any questions or collaborate with the Superintendent about implementation. Um, and, and the reality is, is that the people that work in the district know the unintended consequences that could happen, and, and it is concerning to me that removing that, that, that sentence and then the way that the Policy Committee functioned immediately is concerning to me. And so I would like some guardrails put back into place, and if "shall" is, is, is the problem, even though it's in the statute, um, perhaps, then it could be the board and Superintendent may collaborate to establish and revise. Um, but the statute is clear. It, it says "shall."
The statute is also clear that the board creates policy. We've already talked about this last meeting, and just for the record, we had the first reading last month. It went to Dr. Knoll and the district after that to take in their comments, like we have done with every single policy since then. So we are collaborating, but it is clear in the section eleven dot one five one two, "The Superintendent shall, on a day-to-day basis, ensure the implementation of policies created by the board." That's pretty straightforward. Now, we are working with the district.
Collaboration between board and Superintendent.
But, but this sentence.
The Board of Trustees and the Superintendent shall work together to establish district-wide policies.
The sentence already gets to your point.
Because this section is titled, "Collaboration Between Board and Superintendent." So to me, that says that we work together, and it doesn't make sense.
And we are, we are, guys.
That we don't work together. Because we need to make sure that what we write is implemented by the district well, and if they can't do that.
And we are, and we are.
And this doesn't usurp the, the board's authority. I mean, that, that's not what this language does at all. It does not, the, the board has the ultimate authority in passing policy.
But when you put contradictory content in there, it weakens it, and it makes it.
I don't think that's contradictory.
And then the second thing on that is that we asked Board Council on this, and this was the recommendation.
I think lawyers would disagree with one another from time to time.
And, and we did take into collaboration, e- everything, three trustees.
After I said something.
I also wanna point out that.
We just had one reading.
That we can't look at Tasby because it's an interpretation of the law. However, we're currently getting TEE's interpretation of the law. So basically what we're saying is that we're selecting a different interpretation, and.
Agree, trustee similar. Okay, can we make a motion?
Wait.
Are we?
Trustee Nelson, you were, you had, we're looking for it. Okay, you're good? Okay, all right, go forward.
So I move that we adopt BF as originally revised from the last meeting.
Do we have a second?
Uh, I'm sorry, can you just clarify? Is that, are we talking, I'm sorry, there's so many different versions. Is this, this version?
As originally presented.
This version, is that correct?
Um.
The Policy Committee's version?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead. You were about to say something. Oh, no, sorry. All right. So we have a, a motion on the table to accept as originally submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've already had discussion. All those in favor show by the uplift of hands. Okay, the motion fails. Do we have any other motions?
I would like to make a motion that the edit, um, I don't know what it's titled. Uh, my version. Okay.
Well, is that, was it three oh because?
Yes, I'm sorry. It was, I'm, I'm sorry. It was, it was, uh, for, it failed. Only three voted in favor of it. Sorry, three, three four. I'm sorry, I didn't say that out loud clearly.
I would like to make a motion that, um, that my edit be adopted. Can I get a second?
Is there a second? Okay, the motion fails. Are there any other motions?
I would like to motion to table adopting the Texans for Education, Texans for Excellence in Education Policy Audit Recommendations and Changes until the board has had the opportunity to discuss the contracts the Policy Committee executed with TEE for Policy Connect and Policy Services so that each board member understands the policy changes and how their recommendations from TEE Policy Audit will be included with those changes.
Is there a second? The motion fails. Are there any other motions? Okay, so BF does not move forward at this time.
All right. All right, so the next policy, CL Buildings, Grounds, Equipment Management. So the intent behind this policy is to explicitly address the use of restrooms, locker rooms, changing facilities, and participation in extracurricular activities based on one's biological sex, not preferred gender identity. Uh, this is a new policy that clarifies that a student's biological sex is based on the student's official birth certificate, and language comes directly from the Texas Education Code thirty-three, thirty-three dot oh eight three four. Um, we have received some questions from the district, because we're collaborating, uh, regarding birth certificates, um, and you'll be pleased to hear that. Um, we've talked with the county clerk, and his office has offered his services if you ever have questions about interpreting, um, a birth certificate or modifications to a birth certificate. Um, also, we received one edit from a trustee on this, um, basically changed the language, but the, the spirit and the intent is the same. I'm not sure why it was reworded, but we would prefer to use the language. That's directly from Texas Education Code. Uh, do we have any comments?
Sorry, is there any discussion on CL? Do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt CL as originally drafted from the last meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting CL and its original?
I'm sorry.
There's so much here. It's very hard to follow what everyone's talking about.
It's a, it, just so you know, trustee Horton, it's the, um, CL didn't change. There was only one recommended change, so whatever you have in front of you.
Where are all the recommended changes?
They are in the stack that was presented. They were sent out via email by Dr. Knoll, and then we got printouts of them today.
What was the?
CL.
Well, okay, hold on. Where's the recommended?
What was the one recommended change again, trustee Dawson?
Let me find it. Um, I mean, if someone who, who actually wrote this would like to state why they basically rewrote it to say the same thing, I'm, I'm all ears.
There was a rewrite, the recommendation.
Which trustee rewrote this policy?
I was just wondering, I, I didn't rewrite it, but I was wondering why we decided to put it, uh, where we put it, the CL Building, Grounds, and Equipment Maintenance, uh, that policy, at least the legal side goes into reduction of energy consumption and energy savings performance contracts. But I know we're getting rid of this, so I was wondering if TEE had another legal side that they were placing in, in there.
This, this isn't legal. This is for local.
I know, but the, the local policy, like the legal policy that would go with it is for reduction of energy consumption, energy savings perfor- and energy savings performance contracts. That's what it's about. That's what CL is about.
But what does that have to do with the changes you made?
I was wondering why we placed it, because you know how local policy usually goes with legal policy? So legal framework, CL, on the Tasby, uh, Board Policy Manual, is about reduction of energy consumption, energy savings performance contracts, um, and recycling programs. So I was wondering why we placed this item with that legal framework.
That is what our Board Council recommended?
Well, I would like to know why. That would be helpful information.
But does it affect the, the point of the item? That's, that's the question. We're looking at the policy.
Certainly make it difficult to find.
So do you have a problem with the policy as presented?
I have a problem with placing it there.
Noted. Do you have a problem with the policy as presented?
I just stated my problem.
Okay, do I have, I have a, I have a first or a motion by trustee Dawson. I have a second by May, and, um, we've had discussion. All those in favor of voting for accepting of policy use of bathrooms and changes for a changing facility, CL, please show by the uplift of hands. Okay, the motion carries five one. All those opposed? I guess I have to ask that, sorry. I failed to ask that. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to FM, Student Activities. Does everyone have that up?
Oh, we're, we're, just real quickly, remember, we're taking FM in front of, and let's give everyone a chance to get their papers together. Um, we are taking FM in front of, uh, the next policy, which would have been EMB because of logistics. We'll get there, go ahead.
It's a similar policy, but we just wanted to put them together to make it easier. Um, does everyone have FM up?
What page is that one on?
Um.
It's on one page here.
Oh, I've got it. It's on page thirty-one of the original audit.
And I don't think, did we have anyone with a request for, um, changes on this?
No, there was no changes.
I didn't think so.
To FM. Um, so just for the audience and everyone listening, so the intent with FM policy amendment, it's similar to CL, uh, explicitly states that the district shall, shall not allow a student to compete in UIL activities as the opposite biological sex than what's listed on the birth certificate. It also states that the district may allow a female student to compete in an athletic competition that is designed for male students if a corresponding interscholastic athletic competition designed for female students is not available. Phew, it's a mouthful. Uh, this policy is already state law. Uh, the language is taken directly from Texas Education Code thirty-three dot oh eight three four. Uh, I move that we adopt FM as originally drafted from the last meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, I should have asked that to begin with.
Can you repeat what you said, uh, trustee Dawson about, what? Oh. About, um, being able to use the opposite? What, what, what did you, what did you just say? I didn't see that in this policy.
This part right here, this biological. This part, it's saying that they can, if there's not one offered to them, they're basically able to participate. This part, it's saying that they can, if there's not one offered to them, they're basically able to participate. Did that answer?
I think so.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's okay.
Okay, it's also, those two bullet points on the very bottom are actual language from UIL language, just to point that out as well. So we have a first, and we have, we have a motion, and we have a second, where's in discussion? Anyone else have any comment?
One other question, I think I know the answer to this, but with the recent legislation that took place, where there was a transitioning child that was of the same gender, I guess because that's now just illegal, we don't need to put that in our policy?
No.
You turn that with the rest of it.
Yeah. Okay, because it's illegal to transition under the age of 18?
Yeah.
So we don't need to place that in the policy even though, okay. All right.
Any other discussion? There were no other changes?
This is legal, though, like, everything in there you said is in our legal policy already?
No, and she.
No, I'm saying it, it's a state law, so we're just clarifying it, we're just stating it explicitly in our local policy. What is state law?
So state law doesn't go in our legal policy?
It can, but there's nothing with being redundant, so that when people are in our local area trying to find something, it's right there for them. It's under them being able to compete and so forth, so.
So if you're just interpreting state law in local, why don't you include the transitioning stuff?
I'm not sure where that is in Texas Education Code. Okay.
But you know.
We were talking about state law.
But what, that would be a good thing.
But you're specific.
If there's, if, I mean, it doesn't prevent us from moving this forward, and we can certainly look at that and add that adopt, I mean, that, that same language that you are concerned about, it can be added to this, but there's no reason we can't pass this and then make another change to it if we want to add something else.
I have a, so, right now, we have that statement in our current legal policy, our board adopted legal policy. So what you're saying is you're wanting to put that statement in a local policy as well?
Correct.
Okay, why, why are we doing that?
There's many times in our policies where redundant in certain things, so there's no reason we can't put it there, and so it is just a recommended thing for us to consider, and we put it out to everyone, there were no concerns or comments brought forward until we're here discussing, so just, that's the reasons why. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion on the table, and it, let's go ahead, all those in favor of adopting FM as proposed, please show by the uplift of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. The motion carries 6-0. Okay.
Okay. So, EMB. Local Miscellaneous Instructional Policies Teaching About Controversial Issues. Does everyone have that before I go on? We're good? Okay, so, the intent with these policy revisions, they seek to update certain instructional requirements and prohibitions imposed under Texas law. Key components.
I'm sorry, trustee Dawson, EMB.
EMB local?
Currently, it's, are we talking about the page, it's a 218 on the side, one at the bottom, P8 sexually themed content, EMB, is that where we're starting? Or am I in the wrong place?
I'm not in the board book in that regard, it's on electronic.
I'm not seeing what, what you're looking at.
We don't have that pulled up, so we're referring to the EMB policy.
I'm sorry, I have it, there's something else, I guess notes at the bottom. Okay, sorry.
All right, go ahead, trustee Dawson.
Okay, so, so this policy defines what a subject person is. It states that teachers shall not be compelled to discuss widely debated or currently controversial issues. This is taken directly from HB 3979. It prohibits the district from teaching about critical race theory and defines in detail what that encompasses. Again, this is taken from HB 3979, which is our state rep's bill. With social-emotional learning, it sets clear expectations to only allow positive components of social-emotional learning. There's a long list of what it constitutes, what, my gosh, I can't say that word, of what encompasses positive SEL in the policy. This includes things like hard work, perseverance, forgiveness, patience, rejects things like victimhood mentality. Goes on with gender, states that the district shall not teach or promote gender fluidity or sexual orientation, it will not promote or require the use of pronoun identifiers that are inconsistent with the biological sex of students. However, it does qualify that if, that a student may request with written consent from a legal guardian to use, the use of a specific pronoun to which the teacher or administration may comply with. It defines what sexually explicit material is and additional prohibited terms. Now, I noticed with the edits that we got back and comments from the district, there was a lot of, there's a lot of detail about the sexually explicit material and how we would go about implementing that policy if such materials are found. With that in mind, I think, believe it was trustee May's policy revisions, she made very minor changes to most of this, but what I would like to ask for the board is to consider adopting everything up until the potentially pornographic section, and we can come back to that at a, at a later date, once we have talked through that a bit more.
I don't think you can adopt a half a policy.
It's, it's actually a new policy, and so we wouldn't be adopting new language that, it's not a brand new policy. It's a, the part that we're bringing forward, we're just not bringing forward new material. We wouldn't be implementing that other material at this time. So we're only going to be voting on that amended policy up to, including trustee, I guess it was May's suggestions of adding in, this issue is current or historical and is also significant under selection of topics.
I'm, I'm still not understanding how you can vote for half a policy, I didn't, I don't know, I don't even know what you're saying.
We're amending, we're basically amending it by not bringing forward the second half.
Okay. So we're amending our original policy?
No, that, it's not in our policy at all.
Okay.
At this time, we have nothing on these contents.
So what are we amending then?
Let me, where are you on?
I'm looking at one of the many policies.
Go up until, go up until potentially pornographic material. See where it goes down to.
So, with, with the edits, there was really no edits besides very small changes that trustee May. There was no substantive edits on this besides the sexually explicit.
I sent a lot of edits for EMB.
I'm sorry?
I sent a long list of edits for EMB.
I, I think most of them were on, or almost all of them were on sexually explicit material, correct?
Well, I had some, I'm including the, the top part about teaching, sorry, I'll pull it closer. That, it says, so if you're looking at the very top of EMB, it says, "The district, including its teachers and administrators, shall not," and if you go to one, the way it's crossed out, I can't really tell, I think it's C, "An individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely or partially because of the individual's race or sex." I think that would be really limiting and teaching a lot of content.
Hold on, which, where are you on one C, is that what you are?
Well, in the way it crossed it out, I'm sorry, I can't tell.
Oh, the one, one C?
Yeah, I think it was one C, but when I went through and made the edits, just, you know, the part about an individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment. So if we look at one and it says that this, you know, would be your required partying, part of teaching, I think that would really limit, you know, some of our social studies or language arts classes where we see that historically. So I had made the revision that we remove that line and an individual's moral character.
Trustee Horton, just so you know, that whole section, one with all the letters down, that is taken directly from 3979?
It's actually page eight of 3979. 4B, 4BI, 4BI, 4B little i, 3, 4B little i, 4, and all the way down through 10, that's, and then all the way down into two through part of the 1619 project is all part of C. And all of that is straight from Texas law. It's straight from code, straight from the bill, HB 3979 on page eight is where it began, eight and nine.
Okay.
I hear you, I'm just inclined to, I think we should keep the language that's pulled directly from the bill. And all of these are pulled directly from the bill.
Why, why wasn't it cited then? That would be really helpful.
Okay, I can make note of that for future policies.
Why can't we do that for this?
It's, we can definitely do that, but it would be not a problem, it's not a substantive change to add that language, the, where it came from.
So where, where does it end? It ends at before the social and emotional learning part?
Correct, yeah. Besides this edit, I don't think we received any other edits.
I'd also edited the social and emotional learning part. Because it does say, you know, at the top part, it lists the positive attributes, but then says, well, SEL can have some negative attributes. I thought it would just be more straightforward if we just spell it out, you know, what part we don't want taught. And again, I do, I think one of our public speakers spoke to this, that we're saying that we want kids to be taught to think critically and to be open-minded, but then at the same time, some of this policy is kind of forcing a certain perspective.
On, on the part about?
SEL.
On the SEL, the part that, I just want to make sure I'm following you. You've mentioned that the items that, it said the positive things that we should teach, and you said we should spell out.
Well, it says that, you know, SEL can be positive, and then it says it can also be negative. I think in just, instead of, instead of calling it SEL, if there's something negative that we don't want taught, let's just say that concept. Or if there's something that we do want taught, say that concept.
We say very clearly what, what we do want, I mean, that, that last paragraph is all.
You know, and I'm not saying, you know, positively or negatively about it, but we're, you know, saying that we want them to think critically, but then we're saying this is how we want you to think in paragraph three, that they'll aspire to serve as entrepreneurs and spiritual community leaders. I mean, this is, you know, very much kind of telling them what they should aspire to. So I, I feel like there's some contradiction there, that we're saying we want them to think critically, but then we're saying they should aspire to be entrepreneurs or a community leader, like, you know, that's, I don't know, I feel like kind of pushing ideologies on someone.
Along that vein, I know we said that we are adding a lot of our legal policy into local, and I noticed our legal for EMB currently states, "A parent or person standing in parental relation is entitled to remove the parent's child from a class or other school activity that conflicts with the parent's religious or moral beliefs if the parent presents or delivers to the teacher of the parent's child a written statement authorizing the removal of a child from the class or other school activity." But we left that out of this new policy, so we added in a lot about what they should be teaching and should be learning, but we didn't, we took away the parent's ability to remove them if they disagree with their, disagree with things on a religious basis.
We didn't remove that at all, it wasn't there to begin with.
Well, it's currently in our legal framework, and it's still there.
And it is still there.
But will it be next week?
In legal?
Yes.
Legal is legal.
Well, we're going over to TEE, I thought that they had a whole new legal framework for us.
There is no legal framework, it is just law. Whatever the law is, that's what's there. There's no interpretation, it is the law. And, and actually, that's not relevant to what we're discussing right now on this in the sense that what we're, we're trying to describe here is what we're aspiring for our children and our students in the district, and at any point, a parent that doesn't want their child participating in something, they have the ability to submit that anyway, by law and by our district's policies.
You're saying what's in EMB legal right now is not relevant to what will be in the new EMB local?
No, you're, you're, you're mixing apples and oranges. The whole point that what we're looking at right now is, we're looking at the local policy. Legal is legal. It, it is the law.
But it won't be there next week.
How do you, what are you talking about?
I don't know when it, like, I don't know what TE is going to give us for legal, so I don't know.
It, it, they're not giving us legal, they give us what the law is, they don't make any interpretations, there's a tab there, which again, you're, you're, you're doing a mismatch here. What is wrong? What do you not like about what is here? You, did you provide us with some, some edits that you wanted included?
Well, I started to until I realized that I couldn't edit what we currently have because I'm only allowed to edit what TEE has sent, because we adopted TEE. So I have edits of what we currently have, but I gave up, and I also stopped because a lot of the stuff I edited was pulled last minute, so I spent three days working on it, and then I got pulled, and then new stuff got added, and it's almost impossible to follow, especially with this number of policies. When we put this much, and we overload the agenda this much, it's very hard to make an educated decision on anything.
I'm, I'm sorry, we've given two months on this, where we've given out this information, and we've asked for edits back, and the fact that it was now coming up at the board meeting, I apologize if you are feeling that you are overloaded with material, but it, it's been two months.
The board meeting's for discussion. The agenda's loaded, I mean, it's 11 o'clock, and, you know, people are falling asleep.
But we're here to discuss, so that's why, there's a problem. We're here to discuss, there's no problem with that.
But I'm saying it's very difficult to have a good discussion at 11 PM on 46 pages of policies, some of which got removed, some of which got added. And I'd like to add that last board meeting, trustee Dawson noted that now I have a month to go over it, because I'd only had a week to go over it before that, so that's not two months, that's five weeks.
Okay, do you have a problem with what is presented as far as for EMB? And what trustee May has put forward is her changes and the edits that she has given us. If we adopt up through pronoun usage, are you, do you have a problem with any of the part through pronoun usage?
I think that that part from our current legal should be added in there, that the parent, if it conflicts with their religious or moral beliefs, they should be allowed to pull their children, I think that should be in there. Because they're not going to know to go look up the law.
Was there a motion on the table, trustee?
No. Would you like to make one?
Where did you, where did you suggest that, trustee Semler?
It's currently in our legal, so I wasn't sure whether we were going to have the legal or not.
We will have the legal. Okay.
We're just talking, we don't need to, like, get asked or whatever.
Trustee Nelson, please.
I, I, I'm still, you guys, I just keep asking the question. We're literally adopting a half a policy right now. That's what you're asking.
We're asking, the, the thought is that we consider adopting and voting tonight up through gender pronouns and bringing back, when we can split it up, because there's the concern that it's too much content, that we split it up and do it in two pieces. So it's not, it's not.
I don't see how you can vote on a half a policy, I don't see how that's legal, and I don't have an attorney to ask that.
I think that's a good point, trustee Nelson.
So, do we have a motion to accept it? If the answer is no, then we, then we don't. So is there a motion?
So, a motion that we accept EMB local with trustee May's edits up through pronoun usage section. And we would strike after that, which again, it's added text, it's not revising language that's already there. We're striking what we added. So it's not half a policy.
It would be the policy. It would be the policy.
Guys, I think we agree on more than we disagree, so.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
If you want me to vote on it, I need to understand. It looks like half a policy, so you're saying that it's not half a policy?
Hold on, we have a motion on the table, do we have a second? If there's not a second, we'll open it back up for discussion. Okay, now, back to your question, trustee Nelson.
I motion that we table this, this policy.
Second.
We can look at the whole policy.
We've had five weeks to look at it.
Then why are you presenting half a policy?
Trustee Nelson has made a motion to table EMB.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, there was two people talking.
I said trustee Nelson has made a motion to table EMB.
I second it.
Seconded by Horton. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. Three, four. All those opposed? All right, the motion carries for two. Okay, moving on to F N A A non-school literature. I'll give everyone a chance to get there.
So F N A A student expression, distribution of non-school literature. The intent behind this policy revision is to update what non-school literature can and cannot be distributed by students while on district property um to be in alignment with E M B. Now, we did not pass E M B, so I'm not sure if we should even talk about these policies. So we're just wasting time.
Are you making a motion?
Wasting time. I, I'm not sure how to proceed on this one because it's dependent on E M B.
I make a motion to table F N A A.
Second.
May, I, um, okay, all those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. Motion carries, oh wait, all opposed? Okay, motion carries for two. May I ask a question so I know going forward on this? What is the intent on F N A A? Are you all wanting to revisit it? Are you not in favor of it?
We couldn't do anything because of E M B didn't pass it.
No, but I'm just, but I'm just asking, and the same for E M B, because I didn't ask this on E M B.
Ask a question while we're talking.
Uh, let me just go back since you made the motion. Um, on E M B, what is the intent? Are you wanting to bring it back? Are you, okay, all right. On F N um A A, are we bringing it back so I know for the agenda?
Which one?
F N A A, the one that just got tabled.
Yes. You said it was dependent on E M B.
And then we are moving on to.
Same for, I motion that we, we table G K D A. It's very similar.
Okay. Um, all right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, moving on to item ten.
We didn't vote on that one.
Oh, so sorry. Thank you. Um, uh, all those in favor of tabling it, show by the uplift of hands? All right, all opposed? Five, one. Okay.
President Odom, can I, is it possible to make a statement shortly? I, I think it's very natural to, to have to take some time to ensure that the, the wording is correct on this. Um, and so I think Toma has just made this very difficult for us to move forward. And I think we're learning from this process as we go. And so I, I would just encourage other trustees not to be discouraged, that we just, anything worth anything takes some time.
I would also like to mention, I think it might be a good idea to look at fewer policies at one time. Because when it's this many and you have seven trustees sending edits back and forth, it comes out to like over a hundred pages of policy. And we have a lot of other things to be keeping track of in the district as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, we're on to item ten C legal. And thank you trustee May for that. Receive information regarding recommended revision to board policy F N C, student conduct, personnel tele, personal telecommunications, easy for me to say, electronic devices. Tonight is the first reading of this policy. We are here to discuss the suggested revisions with the intention to vote on it at our next meeting. Trustee Dawson?
Okay, so F N C E. So um first, I just want to provide some context about this policy um before we go through the first reading. Um, so the district has already done some work on this issue in twenty twenty-three. The cell phone committee and the Shack uh worked on issuing K through twelve um cellphone guidelines, which the board at that time approved. Um, currently, pre-K through six is phone-free for the day. Seven through eight phones are permitted only during lunch and class changes. And nine through twelve uh phones are permitted during lunch and classroom changes and should be stored during class time. Uh, these guidelines have been enforced this past year and it's a great start. Uh, however, these are guidelines. This is not a policy. Uh, and guidelines have no teeth. Uh, and this direct policy F N C E was last updated in two thousand and eleven. Uh, as a consequence, these guidelines are not being enforced consistently across the district. Our Shack committee is recommending that we adopt phones away for the day across K through twelve policy um for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, this is based on a lot of research that supports the merits of this. Uh, not only is the Shack recommending this, there's currently a Texas House Bill fourteen eighty-one that's just passed through the House, mandates a statewide ban on cell phones, K through twelve. Uh, we know change is hard, but it's likely inevitable. Uh, and this topic is, is very important to this board. Uh, we want to focus on improving student learning outcomes, cutting out distractions and combating the mental health epidemic that's raging this country. Um, cell phones are central to all of this and it's the right thing to do for our children long-term. So the details of the policy, um.
May, I just want to make one correction to what you said. The Shack from last year recommended.
From last year.
Or the year before, yeah, last year. I just, it wasn't this year's Shack. I just want to make sure.
But they continue to recommend.
They do continue to bring it to us, but I'm just making sure we're clear.
Um, and we have received feedback from some trustees and also from the district. Um, and we have incorporated into this first reading. So I'll just go through some of the high-level um recommendations, policy. Um, so first, we define what a telecommunications device is, which includes cell phones, smartwatches and tablets. Uh, devices must remain turned off and stowed away during the entire instructional day for K through twelve, starting August thirteenth, uh, including lunch and class change periods. They can be used before and after school. District employees may confiscate devices that are used in violation of this policy. And employees shall not allow students to use devices as a reward during free time or for instructional use. However, the use of cell phones may be permitted in extenuating circumstances with permission from a staff member. Devices will be confiscated with each offense, held in the school office and returned to the student at the end of the school day. We do want to give um campuses the flexibility to implement other consequences besides, um, besides this one based on their unique situations. Lastly, students may be accepted from this policy or parts of the policy if the device is determined to be medically necessary by a medical provider and/or if their R D or five oh four determines use is necessary. Um, so these are the major pillars of the policy. I do want to know, I just talked to um an assistant superintendent at another large I S D today. Uh, they have implemented the same cellphone policy, K through twelve for the last year. Uh, and they could not say enough positive things about this policy. Um, she did say, you know, it was hard in the beginning, right? With, with anything new, it changes hard. But she said, you know, the students and the parents, they're all on board now and it's helped sub, substantially to combat distractions, fights and even their attendance rates, which I thought was interesting. So. Uh, with that, I'll open it up to others.
Um, I would like to say just a couple of things. Um, I, I really appreciated the edits that were made after after the district came back with their um kind of thought-provoking questions and, and concerns. So I was pleased with how it was pared down, so it wasn't um overly burdensen, burdensome. Um, and, and I agree that it does look like the legislature is going to um pass this bill. Um, it's passed through the House and, and the Senate appears to also will be passing it. So um, I think the sticking point is, in the hard place is the hallways and the lunchroom. Um, and so I, I, as we move forward with this, I want to just throw out an idea. Um, if it was um a slow rollout, if it was K through um eight the first year and then the first year, the um high school campuses really lock in on their instructional time and not the hallways and they start ramping up towards that. Um, I, I don't know the district that you worked with, but I mean, our district is, is giant. And I think of like a Conroe High School or I don't know if they have one that's like that or the Woodlands High School. And, and we also need to bring um our parents in on this as well. And we need to kind of ramp up and bring the community in with us. And so as, you know, not saying that I would suggest changing any of the language in this, just perhaps the, the deployment on the back end could be um a two-year deployment. And then that second year, um, the high school campuses have moved towards that. And then they're ready to, to lock and load on, on the, the hallways and the lunch. Just something to think about.
I agree, trustee May. I think a slow roll or a controlled implementation might be not such a ripping the Band-Aid off.
I'd have to really praise what I've seen a lot. And I know it's not consistent throughout the district. Um, but when I was substituting at the beginning of that year, phones were everywhere. The guidelines went in and there were some very swift changes. So I think our administrations do a pretty good job of enforcing it. Um, you know, once it said, that said, a component of this that I would have an issue with is if we're going to trust them to roll it out would be to give them the um autonomy to be able to make the discipline consequences that best suits their school. Um, but I have been very impressed with, you know, how much the district worked toward putting, you know, cell phones away just from the guidelines.
Okay, hold on before, before anyone else speaks. I didn't hear trustee, I thought trustee Nelson had stopped as well and she had not, she was still trying to speak.
I'm sorry.
And I didn't hear it until she, she said something. So go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, no, that's okay. Um, I, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around it. I, I do, I do believe that you're on the right track with that. Um, I am very grateful for the changes that have been made. Um, I do know currently that students, when they come into the classroom, there's a, a pocket on the wall where students are putting their phones. And then when their work is done, which, you know, could be sooner than other students, they're allowed to access their phones is what I, is what I've been told. Um, so that would be a huge jump to say you cannot touch your phone and if you do, you're going to get a detention. Um, so, well, the third offense, the third offense.
That's an old version.
It's the red line one.
Okay.
We took into account the concerns that were raised.
That should be in the, that should be in the board book, the updated one.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well then I don't know what version. I'm working off here then. I can't keep it straight.
Okay, so trustee Horton, um, I'm glad to hear you've seen positive input. Um, okay, so any other discussion on this? Is there a motion?
Well, we're, we're just.
Oh, sorry.
First reading.
I will say too, um, talking to, um, I was talking to Keller, Keller I S D. Um, one thing they did mention was having um a little bit more of a grace period. I don't know about, I'm probably in favor of two years, but moving the date back. Um, like right now, it says August thirteenth, but maybe giving like a month or something like that.
You know, having been in the classroom, that when you start.
She was still speaking. Oh, you're done. Okay, go ahead.
Um, that, you know, starting it just right away is easier than saying like you're allowed to have it and then take it back. If we're going to do something like this, I think it's easier just to start that way versus allow it and then take it back.
I would agree. I would agree, but I'm almost thinking that we could still show grace. And we, this is the rule, but we're not going to, if, if you do it, you'll get the warning and hey, put the phone away in the first month.
And I think teachers would do that naturally and already are.
I think too, um, you know, we talked about before, K through six, they're kind of already trained. Like my daughter didn't have a phone out at all, K through six. And then as soon as she hit seventh, it was kind of a free-for-all. And so I think with some of that, if we allow that month of V-way and they came trained, then they would be untrained and have to be trained again, which would be.
That's what happened, you know, because our daughters were in seventh grade together. They came trained from sixth grade and were allowed to have it. And then the guidelines went in and that's harder to rein it back in.
So, excuse me, I'm sorry. Are there any, is there any concern with, and, and taking into consideration what you said about the dis, uh, the campus um autonomy as far as deciding the discipline, disciplinary? The one thing that I really would like to see at least be consistent district-wide, because I think when we have students move within our district, the odds are, because we are so big, they're going to move to another Conroe I S D school. Not unless they're moving like far away, that's not generally what happens overall within our community of students. I think to have at least one consistent first level, whatever, um, district-wide would help going from one school district, I mean, one school in our district to another. So that's the only reason why I would like to see.
Well, I mean, our discipline code is very based on, you know, the foundation's teams already. So we already have different strategies happening at different schools.
But this would bring this one into alignment.
And we removed the payment portion?
Yes, we did. We removed all the detention comments, the payments, the everything. And I just also would like to point out that Montgomery I S D went uh phones away this year um for the day, K through twelve.
And also, this isn't ripping off the Band-Aid. We've been doing this the last year through our guidelines, so it's not a complete shock to our school.
Do you have children in the high school?
Yeah, it would be to the families.
Uh, this, but, I mean, like I said, there's been a committee on this. This has been looked at extensively already. And this is already the recommendation is phones away. So I don't think it's a huge jump.
Well, again, you might want to ask some of our principals and the, or parents of children that are.
Well, that's why we're doing this.
Can I ask a question though, just uh for Dr. Noel? So could we pass the policy as is, but then the implementation and the rollout on the back end is, is unique? And, and the superintendent could kind of decide that?
I mean, I think it depends how you write the policy, you know, how descriptive it is. Um, if there's leeway, it just, if there's room in the policy for that or if it's very prescriptive, then I would say no. Um, you know, one of the things I, I just would offer, and I don't know anything about Keller, so I don't know if they're one-to-one with technology, but that, that tends to play a key role in this conversation is, especially with easing parents' minds, is districts that are one-to-one with technology where every kid has an eye, uh, or has a computer, they can Google message or email their, their child.
I, as a parent, was what was really concerning to me to have my seventh grader come in and say, you know, I need to use my phone for school, please unlock it. I would have rather, if the district had said, hey, we're short on technology, can some parents help buy computers? Or, you know, could you get her set up on a computer? I would have rather had that option. I don't want as a parent to be put in the situation where my kid knows the rules, they come to school and now they're expected, you know, to use their phone, when I don't want them to use their phone.
We were in the exact same situation. It kind of undermined our house rules because other, everybody had their phones out.
Sure. Yeah, I think that my concern on the one-to-one side is for the parents. It is really more of a, I see it as more of a parent issue of parents that want to be able to access their children during the day. You, you know, tell them to ride the bus home. Tell them, you know, grandma's picking you up. Like the things that, you know, twenty years ago, we would have sent a message to the front office. We'd have done some things. We've all gotten accustomed to communicating with our children. And so those places that are one-to-one with technology.
Like they're sending them emails during the day?
Yes, their, yeah, their, their parents can email them, their parents can, can Google message them and they get it on their, 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 their computer during the day. So they still have this access to communicate with their children.
Our students still have access to devices though, right? They're just not issued one for the year.
It just depends on the class, if they're using them, you know, if they're not issued each day in class. I don't know the answer to that. I'm just saying that is a factor, I think, is something that should be, that could be considered over the next month is what is that access and how will parents receive that? Because there will be some parents that are going to be upset that they won't have access to their children to communicate with. That's a barrier that's got to be overcome. And the reality is those are the folks that are going to be confronted with that on a daily basis. And so how, how do the, how would that get managed? I just think is something that's got to be discussed. It's, it's not something that can't be overcome. It's not something that can't be overcome, it's just a reality of, as you go through it. I know when the cell phone committee was working on this last year, you know, Richardson ISD, I believe, was the example that went to the little bags. And they are the ones that cited to us that the way they got through it was they were one-to-one, and that helped parents, you know, feel more comfortable. I don't know if that's the case everywhere, you know, so it's just, it's just a factor of looking at it to see how do you overcome the obstacles, you know?
And that's why I was thinking a slow rollout specifically for our high schools could be helpful in this. And then I was also thinking, like, even high school students, I'm sure that they could probably even write a paper, you know, you know, at lunchtime on their phone. Or what about coaches that reach out to...
That is a question that I wanted to ask, Dr. ...
That's okay, that's okay.
Okay.
We have a new program related to that. Are we implementing that? What's the rollout timeline on this new messaging system with coaches?
But I would guess you still need your phone, or you need something to be able to use it right.
So, we, you're referring to the new rooms to a communication app, and we are currently in our first round of training. We have between 40 and 50 campuses scheduled to be trained in the month of May, and we have, and the first week of August, so we're moving people along with that. We are working with our fine arts and athletics departments on what is the right move to, or like crosswalks, I guess, to say, oh, well, you've done this over here, you can do this over here, to move people along. But honestly, you know, with, as far as the discussion with the messaging during the day, it's helping people think about different times to send messages, right? You know, planning ahead, having different schedules with things, but so much of that comes up in the middle of the day, which I think is where you were kind of going with your athletics conversation. But we expect it to be at most campuses. We're going to do the mass parent invite, actually at the end of this month, I believe, is when we're doing that. We want to get the bulk of the teachers trained so that they can work on their rooms, and we want to clear out this roster. And then, we will do a big publish day after meet the teacher in August to really connect all the families, and that's where we, where we see it all coming together.
Excited about it?
I think it's going to be really great. I hope everybody enjoys it as much as we think they will.
Okay, if I could, oh, sorry, go ahead, Trustee May.
I just said thank you.
Oh, okay. If I could just ask, is there a concern about the language that was put in your board book?
I mean, well, I'm sorry, just one thought process. The, well, not right now, but based off of, we don't know what the final bill language is going to be when it passes, if it passes, which it looks like it will, but, so that would be the only...
And then it would just, I mean, we're not actually going to get to vote on this until next month. So, the opportunity for us to be able to vote on it will be next month. So, we should know something hopefully by then. And plus, we just, we do just need to keep going, and there's no reason to hold this up. If that language doesn't pass, then it lets us have this in place.
As long as, for me, as long as there is the opportunity on the back end to roll it out as a slow roll.
That would be implementation-wise. Right now, it does say August 13th, 2025, but...
Maybe a little more specification. For me, that would be what I would want to vote for.
Yeah. I'm not in favor of taking a 17, 18-year-old's phone from the beginning of the day at 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I would, I am in favor of cell phones being restricted, but I would prefer to let them use it during lunch.
Just to be clear, we're not taking their phones away, right?
That's what this says.
They get to have it on them.
It can be turned off in their back, no, it's in their backpack.
But they can't have it on them from the day they walk, from the beginning of the day to the end of the day, that's what this says.
It says that it's stowed in a backpack purse locker, doesn't it, designated as storage area.
Right, but they can't use it, they can't touch their phone or look at it from the beginning of the day until the end of the day.
I do think there's some things that he said for teaching students how to be professional and work in a professional environment, because I know that some people and some employers, and as a college professor, I've seen some students know how to do that, and other students absolutely do not, and they'll sit and watch TV in class and stuff like that. Why would you pay for a college class to come watch TV in class? I do not know. But they do that, or they'll go to work, and they'll be in an environment where they're not allowed to have a phone because it's restricted. You can't take pictures of what's happening, and they'll get a phone out and get fired. So, I definitely think, yes, it's true, 17 and 18-year-olds are adults and should be allowed to have their phones, but we need to create more structure around when so that they get into those habits later in life as well.
Which is why I recommended lunch.
For high school.
Okay, so this is the first reading, and if we're going to make it, that was one of the things we asked for, was for input on this. And if we are going to make that change, I really highly recommend we make a change now.
Yes, could we just say that they can have phones at lunch in high school? So it doesn't have to be like a rollout.
Okay, so...
And what about the hallways?
I mean, I've, I don't know, I've been like run over by kids on, you know, I don't know.
My request would be that it's not. If, I would prefer that we keep the phones away as much as possible. If you're going to request the change to add it for lunch, we can just...
Hallways you're going in between class and...
And we already have congested hallways, we already have things going on. I would request that if you're going to consider a change, that it not be any more than lunch. And what makes me sad about that, that's when their interpersonal skills come into play.
I do think that there's a...
And they're struggling with that. And that's part of social issues with our students and anxiety, is that they don't know how to communicate with each other. They don't know how to have a conversation. And this puts this back to them before they're graduating high school, having to start talking with each other.
I do think, I completely agree, but I think if, you know, junior high doesn't have it, I think that's when phones are a new thing, and they're, that's when kids feel pressure to get on their phone just because everybody else is, and they don't actually want to do it. They might be able to kind of build more of that in junior high, and then by high school, it's not necessarily the novelty that it is in junior high.
Okay, so, the request is that we consider making that change to be allowed during lunch only...
For high school.
For high school. Is that what you're asking for, everyone? Just making sure.
Say that one more time.
That we're allowing them to have access to their phones at lunch. But that's it in high school.
What is the current bill language? I'm not sure what, does anybody know?
It's away for the day. K through 12 away for the day, the whole day. So that is, I mean, that's a good point.
And it's coming from all over the, I'm so sorry, I just talked over you. It's coming from, I mean, it's being done all over the place again, because we've seen the detrimental effects of the use of phones in schools. And, or with just the amount of time they're on them, not just because it's in schools, just the amount of time, so...
And there's also considerable evidence that student outcomes increase dramatically when the phones are put away.
That was in our research that we've done. That was one of the things that we kept coming up with when we were working on this together.
What about incentivizing the use of a phone then? Like if you have a good GPA or something? I just don't think that it's going to fly very well. If you tell an 18-year-old they can't have their phone all day long.
I respect that suggestion, but I think that would be a whole big nightmare for our faculty and staff to try to determine whose GPA is what, and who's allowed to have the phone. I think that would, and, some can have a phone, but some not, so now you see a kid doesn't have a phone, and does that mean he's stupid? Or, you know, I mean, I could see where there could be...
Students are incentivized, if they have good attendance and a high GPA, then they don't have to take their finals.
Why don't we have it with lunch included for high school contingent on the bill language?
Agreed.
That works.
Agreed. Should we add something about, like, the date that it's effective?
Doesn't it say on this?
Well, it does, but should we...
Should we say grace period?
Well, I mean, the grace is doing it at high school, right? Allowing it at lunch in high school, that's the grace. I mean, we've already got a lot of it.
I think it's best if we can try to roll it out at the beginning.
Sorry, I forgot, I forgot you guys said that.
Yeah, and then I think allowing it, it just kills me to do that, but if that's the request, then we, you know, then I'll go with it.
But we can take a vote, I mean, if that kills you.
No, I'm saying we're collaborating. I'm like, okay, well, if that's the case, so. All right, so, Trustee Dawson, you have that note for...
I'll add it, yeah.
All right, since that's the first reading, there's no vote.
Wait, where were we on the consequences? Were we going to let the school foundations teams figure that out, or are we seeing the consequences in here?
I feel pretty strongly, this is just my feeling on it, because of the way our students move around the district, I would at least like the one consequence to be consistent. What they choose to do, if there's a second, a third, if they just want to keep repeating the first consequence, that's to them. I'd be much happier with us having one standard, one across the district. That's my input. Anyone else?
Can we, can we work with the district on what they think would be good for everybody to determine what that is before we finish this policy? Like, could we check with them and see like what, what consequence they think would be the best and would work the most across the board?
Dr. Knoll, do you have thoughts, ideas, or anyone in the cabinet?
I like the idea of campuses having control. I mean, we have a whole team of teachers that have the foundations team, I mean, that's their point of giving them the ability to, it's just my opinion, I mean, obviously, you don't take my opinion, but that's, that, you know, I think people would speak to that as they like to have that control. And I know we were just kind of looking up, trying to find the bill language, what it currently says, there's just, there is a lot of local control, so it's not, I don't think the way it currently reads is like...
I think enforcement, implementation, it's very localized to what we want.
Okay, so, back to, can we...
The real answer, I think, is we should ask principals. That'd be my advice. There, because, yeah, I mean, we have principals tomorrow, because, I mean, the bottom line is, you know, if you're Tasha Smith and you have 5,400 kids, how will you implement it? And how will you dish out consequences and follow that? Like, all those things matter. Even the, just the things that may sound simple and on paper, you know, we're going to take your phone and we're going to take it to the office. Who's taking it to the office? When are they going to take it to the office? Where is it going to be stored in the classroom while it doesn't get taken to the office? What happens when it gets stolen out of the classroom before it gets taken to the office? There's a lot of things that look simple here that are not simple when the office is a quarter mile away in a high school. So those are just things that I think all those folks got to work through, so...
Taking a phone is hard.
And taking a phone is hard, and especially in a high ECO disp place, it gets, it can turn from taking into a phone into a much more serious situation very quickly.
Well, and I'd have concerns that if they did want to, you know, contact their parent about rides home or something like that, and they don't have their phone at the end of the day, or it's a second offense, I do think that this is very limiting in terms of consequences and how it's handled, and, you know, there's a whole bunch of phones stored in the office. I, like I said, I did notice that people, there seemed to be a lot of reaction just, you know, from the guidelines, and I don't think those entailed consequences. You know, so just knowing that this is the expectation might be what you need.
Okay. Are we good? All right, so, we've discussed adding for lunch in high school for at least the next year.
Or pending legislation.
Yeah.
And then, and of course, pending legislation, but we're still moving forward with our policy. And, and then the change to allow campus discretion on the consequence, is that what I'm hearing? Yeah, okay, then we have those two. All right. Trustee Dawson has that. Honestly, that's really not a substantive change, we're just removing that it would just be the district's, the principal's decision, and then adding lunch. So, I think we're good to go. All right, moving on to item 10D legal. Clarify and possibly take action to modify previous board action regarding the authority of the board president to negotiate and execute agreements with Texans for excellence in education. Trustee Semler, you raised the issue implying I acted improperly by signing two agreements related to web hosting and policy expert services. Here are the facts. You act, you asked that the item be removed from the February 18th consent agenda, and I complied. The item was then open for discussion by the full board, where only you spoke starting at 2:43 and 25 seconds. And I quote, "I just wanted to mention this could be beneficial to help us gain fresh perspective." Then no one else spoke, and we moved for a board vote unanimously, 7-0, to approve it. In subsequent policy committee meetings, we discussed pursuing the free trial of two additional services from an organization you had already authorized me to engage. But instead of acting unilaterally, I consulted two other trustees that was all I was able to speak with because of TOMA violations, both of whom supported moving forward. I then signed the agreement that were free and only for us to check out through the end of this school year, through the end of this contract period, which would be May, August, sorry, September 1st. The board at the, okay, I then signed the agreement and informed the full board for them at the March 18th meeting, once doing so was compliant and legal via not violating TOMA. If you believe I acted improperly, please identify where I acted improperly. That's what I'd like to know first.
Can I go ahead and say what I was gonna?
Well, I just want to know where I acted improperly.
Yeah, I have it outlined, so I was going to just go ahead and do it. I didn't know you were going to start with something, but we can...
I mean, I just simply want to know, where did I act improperly? Where did I take action that I was not authorized to do?
It's Trustee Semler's agenda item.
It is.
But she's called me out for doing something improper.
That's fine, but it's fair to give her time to talk, it's her item.
Thank you, Trustee Nelson. So, first of all, in the February 18th agenda item, it was moved out of the consent agenda. We requested it be moved out of the consent agenda, but the reason it was placed in the consent agenda, we were told, was because discussion was discouraged. We were told that we should not discuss that agenda item, that's why it was placed in the consent agenda. And when I said I thought it could offer a fresh perspective, I was referring to the audits. When we discussed it, I was told, and I was under the impression that we would be, the board would be informed of any contracts that were to be executed, and we weren't. So, what really threw me off and why I brought this item to the agenda, and I hadn't called you out, actually, I was wanting to clarify, which is why I said clarify. But I noted that we saw, or I noted that Policy Services and Policy Connect were signed by you after approval of only three board members. I don't think that's appropriate. I also wasn't clear in the last meeting, even though I specifically asked what contracts were signed, so I asked TEE for them. I don't know 100% that those are free, and I think the board should have been able to go over that. It looks like from the contracts that I went over for Policy Connect Services Agreement and Policy Services Agreement, that we could be spending as much as $40 per page in extra charges. So I think that's very concerning. I also noted that both contracts auto-renew September 1st, and we will start incurring charges then. So I think that's really important, that we lay that out on the table, so people know what we're spending money on and why. Policy Connect includes the migration of existing online policies to Policy Connect, which is a massive, public-facing change that impacts every member of this board and district. So I don't think it's appropriate that one committee of three, not a quorum in a public meeting, would decide something like that that impacts everybody. And then, when we authorize our board president to execute contracts, it was not clear in the previous agenda item whether those contracts would be executed with or without board approval, so I'm seeking to make that clear. I believe that executing contracts without the approval of a quorum of board members in a public meeting does not align with the intent of TOMA, and it would essentially silence this board or other board members. I think it's important that since we're all elected officials, we are... I think it's important that, since we're all elected officials, we are all offered equal votes on things that, on contracts that are being executed by the board. So, um, just to ensure acting with utmost transparency, and in a way that each board member's voice has equal weight, I would like to clarify the board president's authority to execute contracts with TEE, to ensure that all contracts with TEE are approved by a majority of board members present and voting when members are in session prior to be, being executed by the board president.
Okay, so my first question for you is, have you ever signed something that has an auto-renew on it?
Of course.
Okay, so then, how do you stop that?
Usually you have to contact the company.
Okay, so the agreement that I signed was an auto-renew, which is a standard thing unless you contact the company to stop it. So first of all, it's not an auto-renew if we, as a board, choose not to go forward with it after, for the September first.
I, I wasn't. We weren't offered that decision initially, though, so why, why would we be offered that in September?
Because that's the same thing we did with the membership. With the membership contract that Dr. Noel was authorized to sign with them, it was the exact same verbiage that it would renew. And then the second thing I'd like to point out is, if you look at the second page of the agreement, it shows where the amounts were crossed out. There is no charge on that, for those two agreements that I signed, there is no charge. It shows the amounts are passed, are crossed out.
I was never provided with those agreements. I had to pull the agreements from an old folder.
I thought you said you just got them from T yourself.
I have them, I pulled, can I finish?
Yes.
I have them, I pulled them from an old folder, back when TEE was sharing all of this information with the full board. They shared the contracts that could be executed with us, so I pulled those contracts, so. But again, I don't, I'm a board member who has no prices, no idea of timeframes, and I'm seeking to clarify that. So it's not, I don't understand how clarifying the board president's authority would matter with whether or not the contract auto-renews, because since we're clarifying that authority, we would be clarifying that the board would discuss it.
So first, uh, the next thing I would ask you is, Dr. Noel, do you ever sign contracts that, um, haven't come before the board?
It's part of the superintendent's authority by law.
Uh, okay, so it's basically the same thing that I was given authority for in this case.
Wait, wait, so you're saying that you want the authority to sign contracts that don't come before the board?
Absolutely not, I, that.
You gave her the authority to sign contracts.
You gave me the authority in that meeting.
And you're saying, but, and giving that, I'm saying I would like the contracts to be approved by the board prior to you signing them. You're saying that you don't think that's necessary?
That's not what you signed off on, trustee Semler.
That's, that's, I am just simply stating, I am simply stating that in that board meeting, you, we voted seven-zero, I had the authority. I did go to two other trustees, because by our group, we cannot speak more than three of us.
We can in a public meeting, though.
So what I would like to ask you then is, do you think I did something that was illegal or improper based on our, our vote?
I think there's a big gray area there, and I don't think it was proper to execute those contracts without approval by the board. No, I don't.
That's just unbelievably, I, I just cannot even believe you, you think that. You, you voted seven-zero to give me that authority. Now, if you would like to state that you want to make a motion that I don't enter any, into any agreements with T, you are welcome to do that, but I did not do, and it's, it's, I, I mean, I didn't do anything that I was not authorized to do. And so, I, I, and it didn't cost anything, and it didn't cost any labor for the district. It didn't cost, it, there was no challenge from it, and I haven't acted on it as far as making it go forward, because we have been taking things slower, so I didn't take that to the next step. So with all of your angst that you're going over and the, um, the arguing about this and what you don't know, I, I haven't done anything forward. So if you would just like to make a motion that you would like to change what you authorized already, that would be fine. But I did not do anything improper or out of what I was authorized to do. Please, please take that into consideration if you want to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to, um, I would like to move that all contracts with TEE are approved by a majority of board members present and voting when meetings are in session prior to being executed by the board president.
Did you get that? I'm sorry. Okay. All right, did everyone get that? Okay, we have a, a motion?
Second.
And a second from Nelson. And do we have any other discussion? Okay, on that, can we take a vote? Okay. If you are in favor, show by the uplift of hands. Okay, so it is, I'm actually not going to vote in favor of it, so it is fi, uh, four-two, sorry. Um, the motion carries, and we are on to the next item, which is item eleven, take requests from trustees regarding future board items. Anything new that you all want to bring forward other than what we tabled this evening? All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, the time is eleven fifty-two, and we stand in adjournment.